Calling to order the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, March 27, 2025. I believe we have Commissioners Sullivan and Bertley joining us on Zoom.
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. And Commissioner Prudeholm will not be here tonight. Sean is here. I'm going to chair, since Chair Bertley is out of town and it's hard to run the meeting when you're on Zoom. Land acknowledgement. We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Saquamish, people of clear salt water. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers, the Saquamish live in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington Central Salish Sea, as they have for thousands of years. Here, the Saquamish live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations, as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Are there any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I'd like to disclose that we all received a, we Planning Commission received an email from Kim McCormick related to the Hager Scribner Group, and proposing a civic, was it civic and cultural overlay district in downtown. And the firm that I work for, ZGF Architects, is involved with that. So because that's part of the overall sort of planning of Winslow, I'd like to be part of that discussion as it sort of relates to the context, as we're talking about Winslow Core and the sort of value of it as a district. If we get into motions, I don't know that this had happened tonight necessarily, but if we get into motions that are specific to development standards within that zone, I will recuse myself from that. So again, we haven't really gotten into development standards in general yet, so I don't know that that would happen tonight. But when that does happen, just to sort of make that clear, I'll disclose myself from that, or I'll recuse myself from that piece.
Thank you. Okay. Planning Commission meeting minutes for March 13, 2025. Has everyone had a chance to review?
I have one comment on this, and this was a motion that occurred after I left. So this is more of a kind of reflection of what I saw, but there was a motion about this idea of the Planning Staff looking at a, I don't know, we called it a corridor or something like that, along Fern Cliff between Winslow Way and High School Road, one parcel thick, that would be potentially, you know, higher density than maybe some of the adjacent parcels or something like that. When it was drawn on the screen, the box was drawn on the east side of Fern Cliff, but the way that I heard, understood it from our conversation earlier and the way that it was, in the motion, that whether it was east side or west side of Fern Cliff wasn't a distinction that was made. So this isn't specifically, or this isn't directly a comment on the minutes, because I think the minutes are right, but just to reflect that this is, you know, a natural consequence of both doing it graphically, which we should, and recording it verbally, which we know we need to do. So all it is to say, I think we meant both sides, but just to clarify that, maybe for Planning Staff who might use it. I guess another comment about that, and this is not, again, not specifically about the minutes, but we said to review, or you guys said to review, I can't remember exactly what the wording was, but we didn't give them specifics about what to review. We gave them the area, but I don't think we said, review, you know, let's look at this being X height, or this type of building typology, or this type of density. And so we may just want to come back to that at some point to talk about what we meant there. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval of minutes for our last session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Onto public comment. Renee, am I supposed to read instructions for public comment? The ones that are on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the public are encouraged to submit written public comment to the Planning Commission at any time by emailing PCD@baybridgewa.gov. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment in person at a Planning Commission meeting should sign up to speak on the sign-in sheet by the chamber doors. The Planning Commission Chair will call the people signed up on the sign-in sheet, and speakers will have up to three minutes to speak from the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone, which is adjustable. A timer on the screen will indicate when three minutes, or such other times set by the Chair, has elapsed. Orderly behavior and civility in remarks is expected, and no clapping or booing, and no yielding of one person's time to another person. Guidelines for public comment are provided. Remote public comment is allowed with advance notice to the Planning and Community Development Department by noon on the date of the meeting at PCD@baybridgewa.gov, provided that all remote commenters shall be required to display their true name and keep their camera turned on to show their true face, true uncovered face while delivering their comments. Public comment is not accepted during the balance of the Planning Commission meeting unless a public hearing or public participation meeting is on the agenda. So now is the time to provide public comment unless you're here for the public hearing. And Priscilla Hager is the first name I have signed up.
Dear Planning Commission Chair Bertley, Vice Chair Blossom, and Commissioners Prudeholm, Garcia, Schwab, Sullivan, and Dynas. My name is Priscilla Zimmerman-Hager. I'm a longtime Bainbridge Island architect and planner, and one of the partners in Hager Scribner Properties. As Kim McCormick stated in her comments submitted to you earlier, Hager Scribner Properties is again proposing the adoption of goals and policies in the Comprehensive Plan and Winslow Subarea Plan to establish a civic and cultural connection overlay within the Winslow Core. The civic and cultural connection overlay would revitalize the downtown Winslow Core by supporting infill development of uniquely situated key properties at the center of Winslow. These properties do not front Winslow Way and are located to the north of the former Virginia Mason Clinic location along Winslow Way that Hager Scribner Properties recently redeveloped. With the CCCO, the Civic and Cultural Connection Overlay, we hope to encourage replacement of large surface parking areas with much-needed centrally-located housing, mixed-use development, and open and green pedestrian spaces. Hager Scribner Properties owns lands within the CCCO and can provide a variety of essential housing types in a pivotal location, including aging-in-place and affordable housing that would be walkable from our major regional transportation hub, and would also be walkable to shopping, healthcare, recreation, entertainment, restaurants, museums, parks, the civic and cultural complex, and our accessible waterfront. I have long been an advocate of sustainable planning and development. A diverse mixed-use urban center walkable from the ferry is ground zero for a sustainable future for our community. We can no longer try to solve urban problems with suburban solutions. We need urban solutions for urban problems, and redevelopment is a key component to keep our downtown viable. Our island's downtown maritime community evolved where it is for a variety of reasons, including geography and topography, and these reasons are still valid and important today. We should work to strengthen and enhance our connection to our maritime roots and embrace our island's history by keeping our waterfront downtown community walkable, vibrant, and authentic for residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ron Peltier.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. During your last meeting, you spoke a little bit about the yet-to-be-completed groundwater management plan, and Ben, you had a comment about conservation. And I agree with you. I think conservation should be part of the equation, and that would need to be included in the groundwater management plan. It would involve policies, process, and science. There's a habit by the city to attempt to mitigate things by just saying, we're going to do something. But in the case of water conservation, it needs to be a part of the groundwater management plan. Like I said, the groundwater management plan has policies in it. They're developing it out of view with some periodic updates to the City Council, but nothing about policy. It seems to me that that should be coming to the Planning Commission for some process, public comments regarding policies. Couple weeks ago, we had a, BCC had a groundwater workshop at the senior center, and it was reported today in the Bay Ridge Review. There was comments in there by Councilmember Quitzlin that he doesn't support having a groundwater management plan before a comp plan. He called the calls to that, I hope I got this correct, John, putting the cart before the horse. So, and I know other people feel this way, that having a groundwater management plan before the comp plan is like putting the cart before the horse. I don't understand that. It's like, we're going to have a comp plan, and then we're going to decide what the groundwater management plan should look like. I think, when I listen to John, I think what he's saying is that we'll figure out the problems later, that we have more urgent problems than a groundwater management plan, or thinking about our offers right now. You know, for those of you who haven't been around for a number of years, or know the history behind the groundwater management plan, it was talked about in 2015 in this room, 14 actually. I was one of the people that asked the city to develop a groundwater management plan. It got into our comp plan, and now here it is, what, eight years later, and we don't have a groundwater management plan. So it's not something that people who want to oppose density just cooked up to obstruct the process. It's been a long time waiting for a groundwater management plan, and it seems to me that having a comp plan before the groundwater management plan is putting the cart before the horse. So I would encourage you to think about not approving or recommending a new zoning map and baking in, helping bake in the density before we actually have a groundwater management plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I don't have anyone else that has signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to provide public comment that did not sign up?
I'm only speaking here to respond very briefly to the previous commenter's remarks. I have not read the review article. I had a substantial conversation with Molly Heatherwick, and I look forward to reading the article. The point that I made was that groundwater management planning and land use planning are related but separate enterprises, and the idea that we can't make decisions on land use and housing until we know everything that's going to be in the groundwater management. I thought that was absurd, and I said so in the meeting that the article reports upon. That's all, and I don't know that fully sets the record straight, but I do want to be understood as not in any way opposed to a very important planning document, the groundwater management plan. And it's a problem, it's something that we will live with for decades to come, and it will be modified in response to our experience and our monitoring and everything. So I do want to, I don't want to be seen as any kind of an opponent or minimizer of the importance of the groundwater management plan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Not seeing any in the room. Are there any on Zoom, Renee? None? Okay. So we will move on then to our public hearing for proposed design review changes for compliance with HB 1293. Do I read this first? Okay. This is a public hearing on ordinance number 2025-07, proposed updated design standards and design review process to comply with HB 1293. The purpose of this hearing is for the Planning Commission to take comments and to receive any written correspondence from the public on this proposal. The Planning Commission will deliberate at the close of the public hearing and may elect to continue its deliberations before forming and making a recommendation on this proposal. Attendees who wish to provide public comment and sign into the Zoom meeting with their name and email. Citizens who would like to comment should raise their hand in Zoom by clicking on the raise hand icon located at the bottom of their screen. Each attendee with their hand raised will be called upon in the order their hand was raised. When your name is called, please accept the request to unmute your microphone. When done commenting, your microphone will once again be muted. Before accepting public comment, we will hear a brief presentation on the proposal from Planning Manager HB Harper.
Thank you, and good evening, Planning Commissioners in the room and online. So this is an item that we saw last month related to an ordinance, manual, and resolution with attachments to update our design review process and regulations related to compliance with state law. So the slides are this exact same slide from last time, nothing has changed there, so I apologize the word in the packet, but you have seen them before, and they are posted in the meeting materials. So I'll start at a high level, go quickly through the slides, which touch on the manual, describe the ordinance again, and let you know of any changes since you last saw it. So as a reminder, House Bill 1293 is the reason we're here. This legislation was passed in 2023, and it requires us to modify our design review standards and procedures such that our design standards are clear and objective, and our process contains only one public meeting. And so that involved changes to our Design for Bainbridge Manual, which was done in concert with the Design Review Board over a period of many, many meetings. For a long time, we did a real deep dive on the manual, and I think it's better for it. So while this has been an exercise in reducing, it's also been an exercise in, as the bold show, sort of refining our intent, identifying what's important, and emphasizing that. And so we're hopeful that the new process will work for us. So let's start with the manual a little bit. As I described last time, we've made some structural changes reflecting the clear importance for the Design Review Board members of really solid and robust presentation materials and complete submittals. That was a theme we heard again and again as we worked with the Design Review Board. And so some of the standards that were previously listed as, you know, guidelines or standards, we're really trying to get at documentation we need showing good design principles. And so those became very enhanced submittal requirements to ensure that we are sparking those good ideas early before the process comes to us, since we no longer have a dialogue as we previously did with several meetings. So the first perfect example of that is former Chapter III, context analysis. This contained quite a few quote-unquote "standards," but they were really more appropriate as submittal requirements to say, are you considering the context of the site as you do your design? And so we, again, refocused that on a way that the applicant can show us that they've done that through their submittals. Chapter IV has several different types of standards. The site standards section had to be reduced somewhat. I think I went through last time the rework at the bottom where a standard was previously a little too open-ended, and we tried to make it more objective, and, you know, some just had to be removed, but we tried to rework those we could. Public realm standards, similar situation. You can see an example at the bottom of a standard that was reworked. We went from, you know, highlight something or consider something to something a lot more specific than that. Building design standards was a tough section, a big lift to get to where we thought we needed to be, and some of those standards actually ended up becoming, again, more informing the submittal requirements. So, you know, things about wanting to see a certain architectural language represented, well, we actually ask in a written narrative, tell us your architectural concept and how your design ties back to that. So rather than having a standard that says your design shall do that, we have a submittal requirement saying, tell us how you do that. And that enables us to ensure that, again, we're prompting those good design concepts early on, and that they're forced to think through how their design is going to, you know, meet the requirements of our manual. Landscape standards section was maybe the easiest. All sections were retained, a couple minimal removals and some streamlining, but it was left mostly intact. No changes at all to Chapter V, street frontages. As we discussed last time, Chapter VI subdivisions was removed per the Design Review Board request. And Chapter VII, which has now been renumbered, Chapter VI, supplemental standards, very brief section, was experiencing some formatting issues, so it looks hopefully a little neater than last time, but had one or two standards removed, but mostly intact. So the big lift, again, was not big lift, but the big emphasis was on updated submittal requirements. Those are contained in Appendix A. Context analysis drawing and written architectural narrative have a lot of details for how to, you know, make sure the applicants are thinking about these design concepts, again, before they apply. And Appendix B, it's a totally new section with presentation requirements. So again, because we don't have multiple touchpoints with applicants, we don't have that dialogue, we want to make sure folks are bringing a, you know, well-prepared presentation that makes for a very productive discussion with the time we do have. So that is the manual. Has some next steps on the screen, but I also want to, of course, touch on the very long ordinance. It looks much the same as you saw last time, except I did make the copy-paste changes that Commissioner Garcia identified. Thank you for that. So those have been rectified. And just as a reminder, what the ordinance does, it's very long, but it essentially does three things. The one thing that it does over and over is to, again, go from three meetings down to one meeting. It also removes the design review process from the subdivision review procedures, because, as we mentioned with the Design for Bainbridge Manual, that was a request of the Design Review Board. One addition is it requires design review for minor site plan reviews that are within the Winslow Subarea, which, again, that was sort of identifying where's the value for the Design Review Board, and believing that, you know, with increased visibility of projects within Winslow, even minor projects could be appropriate for design review. And finally, and importantly, we retained the public participation meeting requirements for all the permits that have had that previously. They will continue to have that because it was really separate from design review as an intent, even though it was woven into that process. So we are able to still retain our PPM, as we call them, requirements before application. So finally, in your packet, there's a resolution updating the administrative manual. That's sort of our internal manual. It also helps applicants, though, in understanding what's required for them to submit to their permit. So that's really just bringing that into alignment with those submittal requirements that are in Appendix A of the Design Review Board manual. So I know that our Design Review Board Chair and Vice Chair are in the audience, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have for staff, and look forward to supporting your discussion in any way. If you are moving tonight, I understand the recommendation, you know, could happen tonight or at a future time, that's fine from our perspective, as long as folks are aware of the overall timeline of June 30th, when the bill goes into effect. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll now open the public hearing. So the public hearing for ordinance number 2025-07 is open for public comment. Is there anyone here?
Hi, my name's Marilyn Schmidt, and I'm not really prepared here to say anything much, but the one item I thought was kind of important was the fact that the opportunity for the public to have input shouldn't be lessened. I think one public meeting isn't really enough for the public to have time to think about what's going on, and even tell their neighbor, and get back to you, and just prefer to see it stay as it was. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Thank you again, and if there's no objection from the Commission, I will close the public Questions for staff?
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry, you meant close the public hearing. I get it.
Close the public hearing.
Am I jumping in in front of anyone then?
No, and now if you have questions for staff?
Okay. I wasn't here for the first version, or the first round of this presentation, so apologies if these are, and I have kind of two questions. One is just, I guess, about the removal of the subdivision. Is that similar to the, or is that like kind of the inverse of the Winslow Subarea, that it's just a redirection of resources, and Winslow Subarea is very public, and so therefore, whereas the subdivisions are typically less public? I'm just curious about the subdivision. I think the Winslow Subarea add makes sense. I'm curious about the removal of the subdivision.
Yeah, and the question was asked of Todd last time, so I'm happy to answer it from my read, but I would say, no, that it was more about that there wasn't enough to review at the subdivision stage, because the buildings are sort of not anywhere close to happening in many cases. You know, the Design Review Board, it has a focus on architecture, and there's no architecture involved in a subdivision, because it's just the land dividing stage. So my perception was that the Design Review Board felt that there was not a lot of way to add value to the subdivision stage, as opposed to when you get further down the line on projects that are getting closer to building a building, they at least have a conceptual building even at the land use stage.
Okay. But there are site requirements, I noticed, like there was one about within a quarter mile of transit or something like that, there should be pathways. How does that get addressed with a subdivision?
Well, we have subdivision regulations in Chapter 17 that are very, very detailed to, you know, meet all of these, I guess, parallel design requirements that weren't contained in the Design Review Board's manual. So I'm trying to think of what the access was in particular, but, you know, there are definitely standards related to access in Chapter 17. And I would say more broadly, there's a four-step design process that's related to Chapter 17. So the subdivision regulations require a lot of design work to be done. It's just not necessarily the work that the Design Review Board wishes to spend their time on.
Okay. That makes sense. And then my other question is about the comment, about public comment. I know we're going down to one, and that's part of the House Bill. What are the requirements for publicly distributing or making publicly available the materials prior to the one meeting that exists? Like, is that a week beforehand, or two weeks beforehand?
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that issue. So a couple things. There's still a public participation meeting, so that's already an opportunity for the public to get involved, aside from the design review process. And then when an application is received and deemed complete, the city issues a notice of application that is mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the property in question. So then you've got a public portal that folks can access to review documents, and there's a public comment period that people can submit comments. Then the project will go to the Design Review Board, that's an open public meeting that folks can come to. And then at the end of the process, then, you know, staff does their review and makes sure that everything is meeting regulations. Most of these, I think almost all of them, go to the Planning Commission for a review and recommendation. So I suppose not all of them, now that we've added minor site plan reviews, because those are an administrative approval, but major conditional use permits, major site plan review permits, those are the majority of what the Design Review Board looks at, and those all come to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation at, again, a public meeting. So there are several opportunities to get engaged and stay engaged. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yeah. Thank you for catching me up.
So we've talked about subdivisions, but one thing I noticed in here, and pardon me if this was already covered, but major shoreline conditional use permits is also struck from Design Review Board. Is that, what's the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, conditional use permits still go to the Design Review Board, but we've never had a shoreline conditional use permit that was for anything that would require those other permits. So essentially, if it is, if it triggers those non-shoreline-related permits, like a site plan review, if somebody were to build a multifamily, they would need a site plan review in addition to the shoreline conditional use permit. So it's just very unlikely that a project would come in that would only need it because it was a shoreline conditional use. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So as an example, many shoreline, a shoreline permit for anything other than a single-family residence, vast majority of the time, requires a site plan review permit.
Okay. Just purely because it's shoreline?
No, just because it's non-single-family, because it's a, because it's a structure that's not a single-family structure. That's just a very common permit type for us. So shoreline conditional use permits are often on single-family residential that exceed certain thresholds in the shoreline management program, and single-family residences don't go to Design Review Boards. So since that's the majority of SCUPs, as we call them, shoreline conditional use permits, we believe that we would capture all of the ones that you would have seen anyway through the other permit types that would be required for non-single-family work.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Ariel, your hand is up.
Yeah, I have a few.
Yeah, I have a few questions and just kind of an over, I guess, I have an overall comment, also in relation to the woman that had the public comment, is I feel like we have a lot on our plates right now. We are reviewing the comprehensive plan. We're also reviewing the Winslow sub-area plan. We're looking forward to the groundwater management plan. And this is a absolutely critical planning document, and I have concerns that we don't have enough time right now to devote to the review of this. So I'm going to recommend that we put off voting and wait on that. But I do have some questions, and one is, I was looking at, when I review the language for House Bill 1293, it states six months, what I'm reviewing it, it says six months after adopting of the comprehensive plan, so I'm trying to understand the date. If we submit on June 30th, I'm unclear as to why we wouldn't need to submit this December 30th. So if I could, if you could explain that for their HB.
Sure.
So I can read the, let me just read the language so that everyone, so what it says, and what it says is affected counties and cities must comply with the requirements beginning six months after their next periodic update under the GMA.
Right, so our read of that is that it's after the next periodic complan update required under RCW 3670A 130. So our requirement was that we have adopted a plan by December 31st, 2024. So while it's possible that that argument could be made, I'm not sure if the city's legal advice would be to push that, because the requirement is related to a statutory deadline that we have not met.
Right, and I know a number of cities are not meeting that, the deadline, because of all the changes in the legislature related to housing this time around. So I'm wondering if this is a question we ask legal, because from my perspective, I want to devote time to the comprehensive plan update, and I think this is a critical document for Bainbridge, the city of Bainbridge, and I really want to devote a lot of time to it. And I don't think that we have time right now for it. So I don't know if anyone else has interest, but I would be interested in maybe seeking legal counsel on what actually is our due date, if it's from the time that, the December 30th, or if it's actually from the time of completion.
I'm not seeing any response from the Commissioners here regarding that. Do you have other questions or comments?
One other question, yes, one more, is I don't, when I'm reviewing the bill, I don't see where it states specifically one meeting, only one meeting. Is that actually written in the bill that it has to be reduced to one meeting, or is that just an effort?
No, yes, it's in the bill. There are two sections, and it's in the second section.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it to you? So there's one, actually, yeah, there's, one is for the purposes of the section, "Design Review Means Formally Blah, 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 blah." Section 2 is "Accept as Provided," da, 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 da. Number four, under, sorry, sorry, "Three, provisions do not apply to something, something historic." Four, "Any design review process must be conducted concurrently or otherwise logically integrated with the consolidated review and decision process for project permits set forth in a different section of the RCW, and no design review process may include more than one public meeting."
Okay, so it's, I think I'm looking at the bill right now. So it's Section 2? Is it Section 2?
Sorry, I misspoke. It's Section 4. The way the indenting works, if you have to read these all the time, you share my frustration with the indenting. Section 4, "Any design review process must be conducted concurrently," it begins that. That last portion of that sentence says, "No design review process may include more than one public meeting."
Okay.
See it?
Okay, and I, yeah, I do think I saw that before as well, so I just wanted to verify that. So that is, that is all the comments that I have right now. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll just make one response, Ariel, to the idea of waiting until we have more time to kind of sink our teeth into this. It's an exciting document, and, you know, to, I'd love to be able to get more involved and understand it better. That said, we have a lot of work on, within this group to, you know, on the comprehensive plan and sub-area plan that we're kind of already pushing to get through within a tight schedule. And the, you know, the Design for Bainbridge document already has the, you know, Design Review Board, which is another group that has a lot of expertise and has put a lot of time into it already. And so my thought is that it probably makes sense to defer to that group and their expertise. That's not to say that there couldn't be some good thinking about, that comes from this group, or some overlap in how it ties into the comprehensive plan, but in terms of us sort of getting into the details of it, I just wonder whether it makes sense for us, given our capacity and Design Review Board's capacity and expertise that's already been spent on it. So I'm not saying I absolutely wouldn't support us doing it later, but I just don't know if that's within the cards for us or needed, given where it came from.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Ariel, I similarly appreciate your concern and dedication to ensuring we're taking the right time and tempo to get these big questions done. I guess I would probably land on the side of Ben on this, in that I appreciate the work of staff of the Design Review Board to date, and quite honestly, like, I'm supportive of streamlining the process and reducing the number of meetings and friction for this. And if we want to revisit this after we make amendments and we find that there are problems and challenges, I'm very supportive of us bringing this back up. So that's probably where I land this evening.
Ariel, do you have other questions or comments?
Um, not if--
It's okay if you don't, I just want to check before I move on.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to think if I have any other. I guess, I just want to, my one concern is that the design manual has gone through changes, and it's a 200-page document, and we don't have a track changes, so we're not able to see what all the changes are. So I guess, personally, I feel like I need more time to review it before I'm comfortable moving forward with the ordinance, but maybe others are, I mean, we just have to all go with our own comfort level. So that's where, that's where I am. So I appreciate everybody's conversation on it.
Okay. I have some questions and comments. One, so I don't forget it, I'll start with, since we're amending parts of the code, the public participation meeting, my understanding is, we've never really had any kind of, I guess, I don't know if submittal requirements is the right term, but no, like, we're not, we don't tell applicants, this is what you have to bring to the public participation meeting. So while we're opening this, these chapters up, is that something we could add? And maybe just the pre-application documents, it's that simple? But in the past, you know, it's not often, but we have had a few meetings where the materials provided were pretty scant.
Were, did you say pre-stamped?
Scant, like little, like, I mean, you can find them, if you know how to go on the portal, you can find stuff, but if they were just provided by the applicant.
Yeah, well, what I would say is that submittal requirements are not contained in code. They are contained in the administrative manual, which does not have a standalone section for public participation meetings. So we can either, you know, come up with some internal procedures to make sure that we're always taking pre-application materials and putting them in the, you know, Granicus item that we use to create our agendas. That can be a change that I can ensure we make some way formal in terms of internal procedures. Or we could adjust the resolution and administrative manual as part of this process, because we are opening up the admin manual right now, to create a new section for public participation meetings and delineate the submittal requirements there.
That would be my preference, and so, I don't know how everyone feels about it. I can just make a motion and find out, I guess. Okay, so then I would move to amend the resolution.
Exhibit A to the resolution.
Exhibit A to the resolution, to add a section to the administrative manual for public participation meetings and submittal requirements.
And would you like to make a motion on what the submittal requirements would be?
That the submittal requirements be those materials submitted as part of the pre-application meeting.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question when it's the right moment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, and maybe that I couldn't quite hear in the microphone. Is this for Design Review Board meetings, or is this for all public participation meetings, including those that we facilitate in our meetings?
This is just for the public participation meeting that we, that we run at our meetings.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
It's basically making sure we get all the materials that the DRB gets as part of, for the public participation that they get as part of their submission.
Yeah. Well, may I put a point on that? So public participation meetings will happen before the permit has been applied for, and design review will take place after the permit has been applied for. So in this scenario, you would have a pre-application conference with materials, which can range, and then you would have the public participation meeting with those materials from the pre-application. And then the person, applicant, would submit for their permit, and those materials may have evolved at that point. Then those materials would go to the Design Review Board. So often, information from the pre-application phase will inform changes to submittal before it's made. So I just wanted to clarify that, that the Design Review Board would be seeing it after application, at which point things may have shifted.
So for the public participation meeting that the Planning Commission does, they're not required to, at that point, have all these materials that are required under the Design for Bainbridge manual?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't know if that creates a problem, or if that throws a wrench in what you were trying to solve.
Well, currently, the public participation meeting is after at least one DRB meeting, right?
Correct.
So some things may have evolved since pre-application, but with the change, we're going to be before. And I don't, I'm not, I'm comfortable asking for more, I'm not comfortable knowing what that is, what those documents would be.
Yeah, it just might not be the full, but yeah, I guess the point is for us, or for the Planning Commission, that we want the Planning Commission to always have all the materials that are submitted as part of any meetings with the DRB, prior to the public participation meeting.
Yeah, like, it would be nice to have whatever would have been, whatever will be submitted to the DRB for their first meeting. I don't, sitting up here now, know what that is.
Right, I think the issue we would run into there would be that those are design review submittals, so then does this public participation meeting take on a design review function, at which point it would become a second public meeting, which is not allowed? So would it be helpful if I let you know the submittal requirements for pre-applications at this moment?
Sure.
So the main one is a basic site plan, as you can imagine, but also as applicable conceptual landscape plan, conceptual utilities plans, site assessment review or site assessment review exemption that's related to stormwater. And then additional requirements for subdivisions, there are a dozen. So it's, we allow folks to submit for pre-apps with site plans that are, you know, potentially not fully resolved, because that's the point of a pre-application conference, right, is to get that feedback from staff about how the design, as currently proposed, may or may not meet our regulations, and to guide them into successfully submitting a permit application. So that would be the level of information that the Planning Commission would see at a public participation meeting.
Okay. I just don't know that we can then, I mean, I think you make a good point that if we are requiring design documents, that we are moving closer to a design meeting. So I guess we'll just start with that, see how it goes, unless, if you have other ideas, Ben.
I don't, but I just, it seems like what you're saying is, we just want to make sure that all the materials are public and that we have easy, we, not we, the Planning Commission, whoever that is, has easy access to them. So I don't know that that, that doesn't in my mind make it a, does not, a DRB meeting now, it just means that we're collecting all the information that has, you know, has been submitted previously.
Well, the design review submittals will not have been submitted previously under the new era.
So the first requirement, first requirement for submittals will be the public participation meeting?
No, the pre-application conference. So would it be helpful if I described the process now and then what's changing?
But it won't necessarily, but the pre-app doesn't have, like, conceptual drawings.
Right. So currently, someone comes in for a pre-application conference, they might show a site plan and all kinds of things, and then they immediately go to the Design Review Board, Design Guide, conceptual review meeting, and that has specific submittal requirements that are specific to the Design Review Board, they're in their manual. Then the project goes to a public participation meeting here at the Planning Commission. Generally, I think we would put site plans and project descriptions type of stuff in the agenda packet, not necessarily, you know, any technical reports or things like that, which are sometimes, you know, already prepared. Then the project goes back to the Design Review Board for two more meetings, and again, there are additional submittal requirements there. So at the moment, we have three different sets of submittal requirements for three different meetings. Then the project applies for a permit, and at that point, it's in a different arena in terms of, you know, it's under staff review, the, it's being considered against regulations, not at a conceptual level. Under the new era, we will be asking folks to come in for a pre-application conference, having a public participation, public participation meeting, and then submitting for their permit application, and part of their requirements will be to meet all of the design review submittal requirements, in addition to everything else that is required in the administrative manual for a full permit set. So that's when we will have a higher level of detail. We would not necessarily have it at the pre-application conference. Now, applicants, of course, vary in how detailed they submit materials for lots of different reasons, so I think it's very understandable for the Planning Commission and folks who attend public participation meetings to want to have access to everything that has been produced, and I think we can do everything possible to make that happen. But what the 1293 process requires is actually that the work shift to being a little later in the process after application submittal.
I mean, probably we could have a public participation meeting after design review process, when it's done with design review, and there are more renderings and documents, but then also part of the point of the public participation meeting is to get input from the public before it gets too far down the road.
Right, and again, recall that for most of these, they'll come back to the Planning Commission at a public meeting at, through a site plan and design review recommendation from this body, and that will include products that are more refined than they were at the pre-application stage, because that's what it'll have gone through, the code review and analysis to determine, is this, you know, going to work according to our regulations. So you, in this, in these scenarios, you would have a touchpoint at the beginning during the PPM, when it's a little bit more conceptual perhaps, and a touchpoint at the end during the land use approval stage. Ariel?
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, I'm trying to understand the updated process, and I guess I'll just, I'm just going to state again that my concern is that the public has not had the opportunity to review this. I feel like there is, you know, we have very few documents that guide our planning and design for our community, and this is one of the most critical documents. And I just want to make sure that our community has had the opportunity to review the changes. So with that, I just, HB, can you help walk me through this process? Because I wrote them down, and I'm trying to go step by step. So I've got, currently, what we have is number one would be a pre-application. Number two is conceptual design, and so for those of us that are architects, I'm thinking that's kind of like schematic design. Then number three is public participation. Number four is design guidance, so that's for architects, that's like design development is what I'm thinking. And then finally, is final design review. So, so it touches, currently it touches Design Review Board three times.
Yes.
Okay. And so, so it goes, currently, it goes pre-app, then conceptual, and then it goes to public participation, and that's where, so, designer review board has already touched it. They've maybe made a few changes, then it comes to planning commission, public participation, then goes back and gets refined. So, then the updated plan is, this is new, step one is pre-app, step two, the proposals to come to planning commission for public participation, and then three, designer review board.
Three would be application. So, this is all contained in the ordinance, if I may direct you there, page 44 of 77, if you're looking at the page numbering of the ordinance specifically. So, you can see with the cross out, you've got, you know, the conceptual review meeting crossed out, the public participation meeting is retained, the design guidance meeting is crossed out, the final designer review meeting is crossed out. The next thing that happens is the application, and then you have an addition where we've put in the designer review board review after application. So, it may be helpful for you to review that if you have those two pages up.
Actually, that's exactly where I'm getting this information.
Yeah.
That's what I'm reading right now. So, I, so I've distilled it down. So, it's one is pre-application, two is public participation, and then three is designer review board.
Three is application. Three is application, permit application, and then designer review board.
Okay, and then, but then you were saying, you were describing to Sarah that it comes back to planning commission again for another touch, or no?
Depends on the permit type. Yes, major site plan reviews and major conditional use permits. If you flip ahead to, for instance, page 46, so just one more page past where we just were, review and recommendation by the planning commission, and this is unchanged.
Okay. So, what, what is proposed to remove is, you're basically combining conceptual design and final into one meeting?
Yes, we're going from three meetings to one.
Three to one?
Yes.
And then the timing of it now is, whereas before they would have touched it, before it comes to us, we are the first body to review it. So, we might want to discuss, discuss the advantages of that, or the advantages or disadvantages. So, okay, thank, I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the process that was changing.
Sean?
I have said the words during a public participation meeting that I wish we had more information, not even necessarily for us, but for the neighbors and community members that have shown up and been quite confused about a project. So, I'm very sympathetic to this, to your desire, Sarah. I don't have a solution for it, but I do worry that we're perhaps breaking a feedback loop that I think is really important on the public participation meeting, then feeding into changes that are made before the application and the design review happen. And I'm not sure if folks are producing these renderings and spending the money on the application packet, if that investment's going to happen from public participation meeting to permit to design review. So, I have a little bit of concern about that, but I, we could get through that, but that, that's what I'm stuck on.
Oh, sorry.
And we can, we can think about this more. We don't have to make a decision tonight. I'm actually hoping we don't, because I have another issue, which is the subdivisions. So, currently, in a subdivision, departure requests are reviewed, I guess.
Just point order.
Oh, yes, we had a motion. You're right. Thank you. I'm going to table my motion, or withdraw it. I'm not a Roberts Rules person.
If your second allows it.
Sure.
Because I think, we need to think about it more.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm withdrawing my motion, Renee, and Ben's good with that. Okay. Thank you, Chris. So, subdivision, departure requests for subdivisions are reviewed by the designer review board, but they don't want to review subdivisions anymore. I think that some body needs to review departure requests, and so, and HB, you and I have talked about this before, and you'd sent me a suggested motion. So, the designer review board does not look at two lot short plats, and currently, the planning commission doesn't look at short plats at all, but we do look at long plats. So, you had suggested that I make a motion adding short subdivisions of three or four lots to the planning commission review. And I don't, my issue isn't with that. I just don't know that that's enough to make that change, because in chapter 17, 1712040, where administrative departures live, it talks a lot and speaks a lot to the designer review board reviewing these departures. And so, I think that that would need to be changed as well.
Absolutely.
I did not come with suggestions. I thought I could just, that's something better left to staff to come back with changes to that if we make a motion, if a motion passes requesting that.
Yes, I, in my mind, it could be that you make a motion, and that's a recommendation to the city council, and staff is able to bring that forward to the city council. But if you would like to see the exact language, and it sounds like perhaps several commissioners are interested in having this item come back again anyway, then that can be prepared before the next planning commission touch point, if that's the desire of the whole commission.
And then is it also, does it make things better or worse if, as far as three and four lot short plats go, if we only reviewed ones that had departure requests? Because we don't currently review them. Or does that, to separate those out, does that make it more difficult? Is it easier for just us to just see them all, or for you guys to flood?
It depends on if you mean easier to draft the code or easier in the eventual process.
Easier to process.
I would say it's easier to process a smaller number. So, it would be easier to process only those short plats that have departures that are under the purview of the planning commission, because it would be unclear what your purview would be over three and four lot short subdivisions that do not request any departures if the only role for you in the code is to evaluate departures.
Okay. So, then I would move to request staff amend ordinance 2025-07 so that the necessary changes to chapter 1712040 are made so that the planning commission reviews departure requests for three and four lot subdivisions. And I think it needs to be amended to actually put the large, the long plats under our purview as well.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Ariel?
I have something for after this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. All right, Ariel?
Two comments. I'm going to start first. Sarah, you mentioned a concern before about once we review the plans, and then they go to design review, review board, if there's changes, who's tracking those changes? If, if the applicant, you're using your balcony example.
Oh, that was, yeah, that's after designer review board, when they submit for the building permit, and they've made changes to the, the buildings that were presented to designer review board.
Did you want to address that at all in this?
HB, so, I personally think that, I actually think we have language in our code that should prevent that from happening, but I understand that not everyone agrees with that, and it has to do with the difference between the land use permitting process and the building permitting process.
Would you like me to speak to that? Yes, so, I think from the staff perspective, addressing discrepancies during the building permit stage as compared to what was shown during the land use planning permit stage would be best addressed through operational changes to potentially include new submittal requirements for building permits that went through designer review, showing, documenting compliance with what the designer review board reviewed. And we have a few ideas on other ways to kind of have that checkpoint. But at that point, it's entirely in staff's hands. There's no way for a building permit to go through designer review process. So, it's an internal sort of procedural change that would be made in, in staff mind, rather than a code change or a change of purview.
Ariel, do you, your hand's still up. Do you have more?
I have a couple of things. Let's see, section 70, or page 75, section four. A, it says, "The purpose of the planning commission review and recommendation meeting is to review a project for consistency with the comprehensive plan," and so, "applicable design guidelines" has been crossed out. Is there a reason that we would no longer be reviewing for design guidelines?
We no longer have design guidelines. The language has changed and is now designed standards, and it's fully within the purview of the designer review board to review against those design standards. So, there's not an expectation that the planning commission would be reviewing against the Design for Bainbridge Manual.
So, planning commis, so the language could have been changed to say with applicable design standards, since you're updating the name of this document, but that has been removed from our purview, reviewing it for design standards?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because before, it said, it reads, "with applicable design guidelines, BIMC titles 17 and 18, and the comprehensive plan," and all of that is stricken now to only be the comprehensive plan. And do you know, what was the think, I'm just curious, since you struck all of that, what, what the thinking was behind that?
Yeah, I think we're trying to, you know, reorient the planning commission around the work that I believe you have been doing. So, staff evaluate consistency with title 17 and 18, that's staff's purview, and the planning commission has set out in title two is, has more purview over the comprehensive plan than municipal code, and no purview at all over design standards from the Design for Bainbridge Manual. But I see your point, and I think, you know, a change can be made here if that's the desire of the planning commission. I believe it reflects current expectations. I don't believe it's a change to current expectations so much as aligning the code with what I understood the shared expectation was, but I'm open to hearing more.
I guess, I'm just thinking if we're, we've talked a lot about switching to incorporating form-based code, and then also design, like, street frontage, and I, I don't know, I guess I think that it would be nice if we could still review for design guidelines, and if that was not removed from our purview. I'd rather have a wider purview than, than to reduce it, because I view planning commission's role as the design for the island and ensuring that all projects meet the requirements of the different planning documents. So...
If I may add one more thing, I think there's also a risk, again, if design review is a component of the discussion at the planning commission, does that then make it another public meeting for, in design review, for the purpose of design review? So, I think it's also trying to align with, again, the expectation of state law, which is that design review is handled at one public meeting, and that's at the designer review board. But again, I hear your point.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, let's see, I just mostly wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, because I'm not sure. They saw that, that that portion was removed, and then you also, so, C is stricken. HB, it says, "The designer review board's recommendation shall hold substantial weight in the consideration of the application by the planning commission." I'm assuming, was that removed because we're reviewing it prior to it going to designer review board, or what was the reason for striking C?
Can you point me to which C you're looking at in the ordinance?
Page 75, four, C.
I'm just organizing my thoughts. Hang on a moment. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I know.
This may relate to the fact that the designer review board's recommendations can be of two types. So, if we go back to page 70, let's see, where's that, where we insert the new designer review board procedure, or the one meeting essentially. We delineate two types of recommendations, and half of them would not really be within the purview of the planning commission. I'm just trying to find the best example. It occurs several times in the ordinance, so again, thank you for your patience. Oh, sorry. I'm glad I took my time. Exhibit H, which we're looking at right now, is for long subdivisions. So, there will no longer be designer review board on long subdivisions. That's why that language is stricken. It's, it wouldn't be, it's not stricken elsewhere where we relate to site plan review and conditional use permits, because those still have designer review board. The planning commission will still be asked to consider and give substantial weight to the designer review board's recommendations, but this section of code deals with subdivisions, which will no longer go through design review.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. And then I had, I'm, I'm looking at everything on this really small screen, so, sorry. On page 53, you all have, you've struck delineate natural space. So, for A, well, it's under design guidance review. So, are they no longer, in the previous, it's saying, "The applicant shall prioritize natural resources on the site in terms of their highest to least appropriateness for inclusion in the proposed natural area." So, this has been stricken. Is it anywhere else in this document?
It's in chapter 17. So, that's not in this document, but that's duplicative language from our subdivision regulations. So, instead of requiring that exercise as part of design review, we require it as part of designing a subdivision for city staff and/or hearing examiner approval.
So, that now has, so previously, it was by designer review board, but now it's moving to staff?
No, previously, it was in both places. It was merely duplicative. It's what we call the four-step design process, and it's required under chapter 17. It was also listed here under the designer review boards section, but the chapter 17 is unchanged. The four-step design process has been and will continue to be required for subdivision applications.
Okay. But so, but in, so previously, designer review board was reviewing for natural space and location of home sites?
Yes, they reviewed the, the design of the subdivision, which includes those components.
Okay. Okay. Sorry for all the questions. It's just, it's, the document is, I think, almost 100 pages, so it's a lot to review. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. And I can't see Sean, so I don't know if he has his hand up. Nope. Okay.
What, what happens if we kick this out to a later meeting? Do, do we have to do another public hearing, or would it just come back to a recommendation?
You're not required to hold more than one public hearing, unless the ordinance changed substantially, but I would believe that the changes discussed tonight would not be substantial.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, it looks like it'll come back to us with some changes. And then, I guess we'll, does it, does anyone anticipate having any more suggested changes, or can, do you think that staff could, would be safe for staff to assume we might be ready to take action on it the next time it comes to us?
I would say yes, but Ariel just disappeared from the screen, so, I don't know if she wants more time to think about it.
Is Ariel still with us?
I'm still here. Sorry, I just got some water.
So, Ariel, my question is, do you feel like your questions have been answered? Do you anticipate proposing any additional changes, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting? Just so staff can be thinking ahead to our schedule.
Right now, I'm not thinking, okay, right now, I'm not thinking of any changes, but I would like some more time to review. So, I guess when we have our agenda planning, I'd like to put it out another probably four weeks, just so that the public, because I think this is, I know it was on, the public has had an opportunity before, but since this is the first time it's been to the public, I, I would like to have another four weeks for them to review it, and even though it won't be a technical... And even though it won't be a technically public participation, they can come and give their comment, and also write us comments. So that is, that's my thinking on it.
And then, so after we make our recommendation, it goes to council?
That's correct.
And, I'm just thinking of the June thirtieth. So if we waited another four weeks, that's into May. And do you believe then council, they, they don't have to do another public hearing?
Correct, they would likely have at least two touches. So they usually like to see something first, to then move it to consent if they agree with it, so that there's a, another business meeting. So if we were to go one month from now, back to this Planning Commission meeting, we could do the later April date, and then it could go to council in May, and we'd be okay for the timeline.
Okay, my, my only suggestion or request would be, Planning Commissioners who are reviewing this, don't, don't wait, like, it'd be nice if we didn't get to week four, the night we're going to recommend it, and having a whole bunch more changes. So if anyone thinks of anything, maybe we can put it back on the agenda to have another discussion and provide more direction. But, so, so if anyone thinks of anything, has any proposals, speak up so we can put it on an agenda and, and direct staff with a motion.
Thank you.
I, I can say that, I did the extensive hundred-page review the last time, and read all the sections, and feel very comfortable with where we're at right now. But if others need more time to review it and to cycle through it, I totally understand and want them to have the time, but I don't anticipate further changes on my part.
Good. I did mean to mention, by the way, that some of the photos have been updated since you last saw it. So if you're really keyed into which projects are being showcased for which standards, you may want to take another look at the photos. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to our next item. It's a noise variance for the Bainbridge Terminal Geotechnical Exploration. And I don't know who is leading this. HB?
Sorry, I believe we have applicants here to present on the noise variance, does not have a presentation. They may be on Zoom.
Oh, they're on Zoom, okay. And this is probably going to be our last variance for noise?
Hello, can anyone hear me? I can't hear you, such as the troubles with Zoom. But, yeah, thank you for your time. My name is Jake Ryskin. I'm a geotechnical engineer with Shannon and Wilson. I'm representing Washington State Ferries on the electrification project. For those who don't know, the project involves installing charging infrastructure and running power from the Merton Cove substation, approximately on Sportsman's Club Road and SR three oh five, running a power route down the west side of SR three oh five down to the ferry terminal. This is part of the effort to get the fleet onto a hybrid plug-in electric system for the ferries. The reason we're asking for a noise variance is we are doing some soil sampling at various locations on SR three oh five. And some of the locations are a bit tight, and for safety reasons, we may need to do night work. Because it's night work, that would be outside of the normal construction hours, hence the need for a noise variance. So if you are looking for, you know, a reference to what we're going to do, I point you to page one ninety-two of the agenda, and the subsequent pages there, it shows a plan of the boring locations and the intended work. The noise associated with the drill rig is much quieter than, say, like, a pile-driving rig. We're trying to be sensitive to residents, so we are trying to do the work in the daytime as much as possible. And like I said, we would just reserve the trickiest locations for potential nighttime work. And all this would be subject to what WashDOT traffic control would allow us to do. And I'll see if I can get audio to work on my end, because, like I said, I can't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, yes.
I think we just weren't saying anything before.
So that's kind of a, you know, broad strokes overview, I only have five minutes allotted. But if you'd like to hear more details, I'm happy to elaborate.
Should I make a motion?
I move to approve the request for a variance from Bainbridge Island Municipal Code sixteen point sixteen Noise Control Regulations, allowing the WashDOT geotechnical crew to work at night between the inclusive dates of April first, 2025, and May thirtieth, 2025, as needed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't see anyone's hand raised, so we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item is Planning Commission members' Presentation on Infrastructure Considerations and Housing Options/Allocations. And Commissioner Garcia, are you leading, are you starting off?
I can do the sewer slides, I was expecting that, but, oh, wait.
I think it's all on one, but, one slideshow, but I think the infrastructure is first.
Okay, okay. I can redo it if we can get it up. I can share my slides if you like. I, I'm in the meeting, it's fine. He just goes, right, see.
I think I have the presentation, do you want me to put it up?
I can do it.
He needs to be made up.
Yeah, probably. That's what I'm missing. If you don't mind showing the presentation.
I think I have the right one.
That looks correct. All right, now, Ariel, did you want to speak to these at all, or do you want me to just jump right?
I'll talk to the housing ones if you can. It should be first, the sewer and groundwater.
Okay, great, it looks like the groundwater comes first, so.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so, I'm sorry, I was more prepared to speak to the sewer side of this, but I'm, I'm happy to row my particular oar on this one, so. Just to maybe, at a high level, look at how are we going to approach the content of the groundwater management plan? What does it cover? Is it pure review? Something that, you know, we should consider, and what is the timeline? We're getting a lot of questions, generally, from the public, and they're right, rightly placed with us to answer. So if you don't mind, maybe a little bit of review, the next slide. So, the groundwater management plan is a product of the Growth Management Act, which requires all cities and counties to adopt development regulations that protect critical areas. Among these statutory requirements under RCW thirty-six seventy-eight dot oh three oh sub five, there are five types of critical areas. Wetlands, areas that are critical recharging for the aquifers, for potable water, frequently flooded areas, geologically hazardous areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. So, if we look at the groundwater management areas and programs, there are six sections that should be included in a groundwater management plan. A characterization of the area, problem definition, an assessment of the water quantity and quality goals and objectives, alternatives for management, as well as recommendations, and then an implementation plan. Next slide. So, the Critical Areas Ordinance for Bainbridge Island, sixteen dot twenty dot oh, dot ten, recognizes that the critical importance of its groundwater resources and the city's development regulations, including the Critical Areas Ordinance, are designed to support and implement the comprehensive plan in accordance with the GMA. So that's that linkage and importance that I think we heard of earlier. The Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas, RCRA's, category one and two island-wide designations in accordance with the plan, are defined to the right, let's just make sure that... Yeah, yeah. And the Aquifer Recharge Protection Areas requires the designation of in the R zero point four and R one and R two zoning districts. So, as we look at the aquifer conservation zones, so these are based on the SA Island UGA designation, twenty thirteen, Wellhead Protection Program, as well as amendments to the Safe Drinking Water Act. We see the network to the right, wells by aquifer, I believe Merton Cove, and sorry, looking at the map here, just getting oriented. We do have, across the island, deep wells, and those are used for the monitoring. So, probably recognized that these, there are fewer on the South Island, so there's less data there. Next slide. In terms of the critical area mapping, the, and buffers, the contours are in red here, as we're looking at the Winslow area. The wetland designations are that sort of aqua or turquoise. I am terrible with colors, so I apologize, it's projection on the screen. We can see those areas highlighted, sort of, more on the perimeter, but also within the sub-area designation or study area. Wetlands, as defined in the light green and the pink wetland buffer that would go around each of the wetland delineations, as well as the wetlands. So, the streams themselves kind of flow through that, and a darker blue that's harder to see on the screen. And then their own buffers are in light gray. So, areas where water is deposited, retained, and flows are buffered for recharge. And so, out of full percolation down into the aquifer, and, you know, as much retention as possible into our aquifer for drinking and other uses. Next slide. So, critical areas within Kitsap County here, we've got to zoom in on Winslow itself. We see the geologically hazardous areas highlighted in red. Those include the bluff on the east side there of the Yomont, and, as well as to the southeast, the High School Road, and I believe that's Madison. Area has a high designation, as does the east side of Eagle Harbor. And that's due to the high bluffs and the general instability and high slope in those areas. So, less disturbance, include his buffers. You know, you wouldn't want to create a disturbance there because of the erosion effect, and, you know, overall impacts would be duplicative in that area. Next slide. Okay, if we look at critical wetlands and streams at a macro view, we see our, I believe those are two closed watersheds there in Merton Cove. And if we kind of look at the delineations, the red boundary there is of the watersheds themselves. And we can see the Merton Cove watershed there comes in roughly to, looks like New Brookland there, and crosses over towards Sportsman's. So, the green dots, I believe, are the monitoring wells that are within those critical wetlands and streams. It's not clear from this slide, I'm sorry, was not prepared for to speak to that. Next slide. And then, coming to the Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas, so we layer those together, we connect the boundaries, the sensitive areas, and we're able to see the category one, Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas in red, and the category two, Critical Area Recharge Areas in yellow. And that is a significant portion of the total Winslow study area. I believe that, yeah, the blue still delineates the streams and standing in bodies of water. So, there is a significant constraint overlaid for the Critical Aquifer Recharge. The recommendations, we might look to the state there and have a different presentation on. But, you know, high permeability, low disturbance, so. Not to mention the benefit to wildlife, next slide. All right, so now, with that in mind, I don't think it would, it surprises everyone that we live on kind of a wet island, at least not this time of year, when there's mud tracking in to the foyer. But, next slide, I wanted to actually start, if you could jump forward to slide thirteen, just jump over these for a second, because we had some slides presented to us at the Planning Commission meeting on October tenth. And it was an overview of what the sewer capacity over the next, oh, say, you know, twenty, fifteen, twenty years might look like with our existing wastewater treatment plant, just down from the Holly neighborhood here on Eagle Harbor. If we look here, the treatment capacity, this is just some definitions, I think, to get us started. A single-family home produces one equivalent residence unit, so one-to-one. If we talk about the total capacity of the sewer plant today, the wastewater treatment plant, it is measured in ERUs. A single-family home is one ERU. A multifamily home, so that might be a duplex, a triplex, is considered point eight. There are certain efficiencies there for the amount of lawn or outdoor spaces, as well as, you know, the consolidation of rooftops and retention usage. So, a multifamily home generally, per unit, has a lower ERU, it's equivalent of eight tenths. Commercial units can be very different, depending on the type of use. So we have offices, salons, a sit-down restaurant, or a brewery might be more water consumptive and require more treatment. There are some mitigation opportunities there that can be applied, and conservation may not make all single-family homes equivalent, but this is the general unit treatment. Next slide. So, today, our current status, our, our plant has a capacity of forty-two hundred and fifty ERUs. Of that, we have used four thousand and fifty of them. That leaves us two hundred ERUs remaining in our capacity, and plans have been undertaken to upgrade that capacity. But if we take the single-family homes, and we're just dedicate all two hundred of those to single-family homes, we'd get two hundred of them. Of that, the population would be two- Of that, the population would be 2.23 people per household, 446 people. So that's what remains today in total population. If we were to build all of those as multiple family homes, so again, we would get a few more out of that. We would get something closer to 557 people. So there's a little bit of variance there. If we go to the next slide. If we look at 2026, so the first upgrade as it's been designated here, it'll add 900 ERUs, and that will bring us up to a total of 5,150. So we have capacity of 4,250. We add 900 to that, it's 5,150. From the perspective of today, that's a net of an additional 1,100 ERUs. So 900 plus the 200 we have remaining. And if we do that as all single-family homes, that's of course 1,100. If that produces a capacity of 2,453 people, and this is additional, right? And that, if we did that as all multifamily, we would get 1,375 households, which would be about 3,066 people. Again, that's that households times 2.23. There's an additional upgrade that is possible. We anticipate that this next upgrade would, our planners do, that it would be viable for 10 to 15 years. If we go to the next slide, we'll see that that second upgrade will add an additional 900 ERUs. So that will bring the total capacity of the wastewater treatment plant to 6,050 ERUs. So that's the 6,050 minus the 4,250 that we have from originally today. And from the perspective of today, that's an additional 900, 900, and 200, 2,000 ERUs. And if we did that all as single-family, so again, they were saying from today to the second upgrade, that gives us an additional population, if we do it all as single-family, of 4,460. That's 2,000 times 2.23. Or if we do it all multifamily, we get 2,500 households, which times 2.23 is 5,575. So this is the basis of my comment last week that our total capacity for, at least from a sewer perspective for the island, is in the range of, from today, an additional 4,460 to 5,575 people. And that's kind of at the extremes, where we do all single-family, no business, or all multifamily. Now, if we flip back and see a map of, a summary of the math on slide 11. Okay, so now, we've got our definitions up there. We see the 200 ERUs that are remaining. The first upgrade, again, we see the 1,100 ERUs. There's one clarification here is that the units are households, not ERUs under all single-family. That's just a kind of a carry-down. Missed that in the review. And there's that number of 2,453. And again, if that, if we did it all as multifamily households, so with that .8 and divided that same 1,100 by .8, then we would get 1,375 households, at which at the 2.23 would give us approximately 3,066. And again, just to summarize, the 2039 upgrade, or the second, and as I understand it, final possible upgrade for our wastewater treatment plant would net, plant with the capacity of 6,050 total ERUs. Again, from all single-family perspective, that is a net of 2,000. And doing that as single-family would yield 4,460. Doing it as multifamily, so we take that same 2,000, we divide it by .8, and then multiply it times 2.23, we get 5,575. And I hate to be repetitive of this, but math is really hard for, to have as a conversation. So I'm trying to put it a couple different ways. But it, this doesn't consider some of the advanced treatments that are potentially coming down the line for the sound in terms of removing certain effluents. There are onsite and conservation aspects that could bias or expand this somewhat. But it is sort of the boat we're in today. And each of these upgrades become increasingly more expensive with the membrane technologies. So not every household of added capacity is equal in the cost, although I'm sure the utility is the same to each person who has access to that hookup. So I think that's towards the end of the slides. And if we can just confirm, I think there's one more. Slide 12 is just, again, the math put a slightly different way. I won't repeat it to you, I'll save you that. And let me just confirm in my deck here that I've gotten through that. And it gets to, I think, the 1220 housing requirements. Ariel, did you want to take that part?
Yeah, I'll speak to the housing. But Chris, can you, let's go, can we go back to the last slide? I just...
The previous one we're looking at? So slide 11?
Yeah, I feel like we need clarification, I guess, for everyone. So the 2039 second upgrade is 6,050 total ERU. Then you subtract that from current 4,250. So we're saying...
That yields 2,000. You're breaking up a little bit, Ariel, but that would yield 2,000 ERUs. And how we use them, how we, you know, develop them is of great, you know, it's great concern. I mean, this is, this is, this is the limit for now and today of our wastewater treatment capability in Winslow. And again, that all single-family household, that 1,100 isn't, shouldn't have ERU in, up below 2026 there. That's just household, so.
Can I ask a, well, I don't know if this is a question. It's probably actually more of something I need to go back and look up. But just to clarify, this is our limit for our capacity for Winslow, not for the whole island, right?
That is correct.
So, I mean, you said it's the sewer capacity for the whole island, and I just wanted to clarify, right? We've got Linwood, and then we've got a lot of people on private sewer drainfields. And what I'd like, I'd be interested, taking this information, great information, thanks for all the math, really makes it easy to understand. But I'd be interested to go back to the, like, whether it's alternative two or three, and look at that population, you know, the number, whatever it is, 10, 10 to 11,000 additional people, the capacity. How much, how many of those are in? I suppose we'd need to look at the, which one is the one that aligns with Winslow subarea? I think it's two?
Are you talking about appendix F or?
I actually have it up right now.
Okay, yeah, so I guess maybe you're answering it. My question is, how many of those 11,000 are in Winslow versus in the conservation area?
Yeah, so for alternative one, no action, that would be 1,334 people in Winslow, additional. For alternative two, it would be 6,397 people in Winslow alone, additional. And then alternative three, 5,412 people.
And alternative two is the one that expands?
Alternative two is dense center. Alternative three was actually the go-out. Alternative two is the go-up. And what we've been looking at, the preferred alternative, is a blend.
So alternative two is actually that 6,397 isn't including everyone within the sewer boundary? Because that's, Winslow subarea boundary was smaller than the sewer boundary, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, in two, I think it was smaller. I'm going to just quickly look at, try to find it.
Can I ask Jennifer? Can you answer that?
Peter, can you state the numbers again? I was just trying to write them down today.
Jennifer, hold on a sec.
So there's a problem in our system. When we start hearing that coming in from Zoom, we have to reset the computer that controls it. So Ariel, I don't know, you probably can't tell, but we can barely hear what you're saying right now. So do we want to break and do that now? Or do we want to wait for Jennifer to answer? It would take a few minutes.
Okay, let's recess.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you can remind me what the question is, too.
Just while we're getting ready to start, I might just say that this is all from the, the presentation that the city gave us and the household numbers that were baked into the targets that we received from Kitsap County. So just did the math backwards there to get the 2.23 household size, so.
We're good? Okay. So we are back from our recess. And Ben, do you want to? You were talking about sewer district boundaries and numbers, and you had a conversation with Planner Sutton during our recess. Do you, or Jennifer, want to kind of recap?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jennifer Sutton, Senior Planner, here to support your discussion.
So I, where I was going with this was just comparing the numbers that Chris went over, which is at the maximum, sort of 2,000 ERUs, which could be up to 2,500 units if you're thinking about multifamily or 5,575 people, 5,575 people. And we were comparing those to the numbers within Winslow in alternate two and three. Alternate two being the one that does not expand the Winslow subarea boundary, but adds a lot of density or adds, you know, focuses the density in the existing subarea boundary. Alternative three, which expands the Winslow subarea boundary to align with the sewer boundary, which is similar to what the Planning Commission has preliminarily made a motion on. And so I guess the question, and I feel like you kind of answered it with pointing me back at the DEIS, which makes sense, but just whether the numbers that were shown there were within the total capacity of after both expansions, after all the improvements to the treatment plant. And so what were you, say what you said earlier, Jennifer, which is that the two is, like, almost has enough capacity and three has just enough capacity, sort of?
Sure. And I'll just direct the Planning Commission and the public, if they're interested for more information, to our draft environmental impact statement. There is a table that appears in a couple places, but the copy I have in front of me is in the land use chapter, Table 3.1-2. And it shows for all alternatives, all of the units, jobs, and people produced for the different alternatives in the different geographies. So this shows me that for alternative two, which didn't change, did not propose to change the boundary, that 2,868 units were estimated to be generated. Most of those were in the core areas where the proposed density was proposed to increase, was studied to increase the highest in alternatives two. That's the high school road zone, the ferry zone, and the core district zone. So we could assume that most of those would be multifamily units based on the proposed zoning that was studied for alternative two. Alternative three did change the Winslow boundary, did propose to change it to go to the north and west to take in more properties in the sewer, but pulled it back from the east. Alternative three produced fewer units, 2,386 potential units in Winslow. Again, most of those potential units in alternative three were also, would also be generated by increasing the development standards in the high school road, ferry, and core districts. So assumes to be multifamily units. So the, you know, the single-family unit zoning for a single-family doesn't change that much across the three alternatives. If you're interested in units by zone, I'll point you to the housing chapter of the DEIS where you can find tables for unit estimates by zone by alternative. In alternative three, alternative three, which we called our middle housing expansion, does have substantially more R8 and R14 units produced than alternatives one and two. So I'll point you to another chapter, the utilities chapter of the DEIS describes the city's existing utilities, sewer, water, stormwater, electricity, and what their systems are like and what the impact of each of the alternatives would be on those systems. So to just support what Commissioner Garcia has presented tonight, in that chapter, it shows that alternative two can be almost fully accommodated with planned upgrades to the sewer treatment plant, but not quite. So additional mitigation measures or additional capital may be needed, but that the units and the unit types, a lot of multifamily generated by alternative three, could almost be accommodated by the planned sewer upgrades. So you can read that in the utility section of the DEIS. So these are just measuring, you know, against particular set of assumptions. And, you know, we had alternative two when you described it, and then we measured, you know, saw how that would play out for the different kinds of utilities. So once the Planning Commission, you know, comes together and has your recommendation for what your land uses are proposed to be, you know, we'll study that again. But I think, the other thing I just want to, you know, our utilities aren't frozen in time. You know, I think, and I think that's something that you can take away from the utility section of the DEIS, is that the city has projects already in the pipeline for a variety of reasons that are going to come online in the, you know, whether it's maintenance or state-required upgrades, that will come online over the next several years. And then there's other projects that could be contemplated if needed in the future.
Thanks. So, yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to look at what those mitigations are. But it seems, all that says to me is we're in, like, roughly within, you know, the right ballpark or a roughly equivalent ballpark with the action alternatives and the sewer capacity.
Yeah, if we look at, if we go to the draft DIS, page 336, you can make me a presenter, maybe, but it does have, in fact, an additional maximum of the Winslow wastewater treatment plant of 5,233. So those numbers, if anything, are lower and presume a mix of office, of single-family and multifamily that results in a lower-than-maximum yield. And that's totally reasonable. It does also cite there, for context, the South Island Sewer Service Area with an existing at-the-time 720 ERUs. If we follow the same procedure with those 720 ERUs, they give us a range of between 1,600, single-family and 2,000, multifamily. So that's the only other wastewater treatment on the island and also services Linwood.
I'd also like to note, and this is going back to a question just before our recess, of the boundaries that which these numbers were calculated. So alternative two is essentially same subarea boundary as today. same subarea boundary as today, as the current. So significantly smaller than the boundary, at least the preliminary one that we've discussed. So that, that population number theoretically, if you're going to account for Winslow, the larger Winslow that we have preliminarily defined, if we were to just take, I don't know, I'm curious of whether or not we have any preliminary population numbers for the preferred alternative, as it stands, based on its proposed density, because we're not, we're not, they're not comparing apples to apples here, quite. And even Alternative 3, which is a little bit closer to our preliminary boundary, that excludes Wing Point entirely, that entire neighborhood. So it's the population within that boundary minus Wing Point is 5,412 people. Whereas the entire sewer is, sorry, where was that number? 5,233. So the entire sewer area is capable at maximum build-out, 5,233, without any mitigation or conservation. And the Winslow, the Alternative 3 density pencils out to 5,412, so an overshoot of about 200 people. And that's excluding Wing Point. So am I thinking about this correctly? I mean, because we're playing with different R numbers and FARs and...
Yeah. Yes. Thank you for all of this good work. And, you know, once the Planning Commission completes your work on what kind of zoning and development standards we should have where, you know, we'll go back to the drawing board and crunch those numbers to see how many of what type of units are likely to be produced. Just, I just want to weigh in on the Wing Point kind of question that you had. And I think that maybe I heard some concern that, wow, is it, is, does that, by withdrawing Wing Point from Alternative 3, does that really mess up the sewer analysis in the DEIS for Alternative 3? I think that's what I heard you say.
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
So I would just want to say, I think that is okay for a couple of reasons. Although that area for Alternative 3 was proposed to be pulled out of the Winslow subarea, there wasn't any increase in zoning proposed in that area. And that area is overwhelmingly already built out. Of course, there is, you might be able to have a two-lot short plot here or there, or, you know, maybe there's a few vacant lots, but there is not very much capacity in that area at existing zoning standards.
I get it. Yeah.
So consequently, even if a house was torn down and a new house put in, that's just one ERU for one, you know?
Yeah.
It's not additional sewer capacity needed for that area.
Yeah, I'm seeing it now, because 5,400 and change is additional capacity, and we're just not including Wing Point in that calculation. There wouldn't be much additional capacity. There wouldn't be any additional capacity, or much
Correct.
in Wing Point, even if we did include it, at the current, at the proposed R levels, density levels there.
Correct, because, because in the alternatives, we didn't propose to intensify the zoning in that area.
Okay.
And it's for the most, almost entirely built out. Of course, there's a vacant lot here or there, or
Yeah, of course, yeah.
some lots that could divide into two or three lots, et cetera. But and then, of course, there's the shoreline and the steep slopes
Yeah.
that are to the east and south of that area.
Okay, so that actually alleviates some of my concern about the fact that we're not looking at the same boundary calculations, because even including Wing Point doesn't necessarily change that additional population that we would need to factor in. So, yeah, that alleviates my concerns. Thank you for helping me get to a small epiphany.
I have a question. And Jennifer, I don't know if this, this might be a question I have to ask Public Works. So, Chris, your presentation was focused, obviously, on residential, but there presumably could be some commercial growth. And are we just assuming that that number of ERUs for commercial would be so small?
No, I'm saying from a population, if we're focused on population right now, this is our theoretical maximum
Okay.
from the sewer capacity perspective, at least.
Do you know, in the DEIS, when they were looking at sewer capacity and they were taking into account commercial use of the sewer, do you know how they projected that? Did they, for example, did they say, well, 10% of our ERUs today are for commercial, so we'll assume 10% in the future? Do you?
I would have, I would have to reread it. And, and I think you may remember hearing that not every commercial ERU is, you know, some commercial uses use a lot of water and some use very little. So I think that it's a topic that the Planning Commission, you know, perhaps a great time to talk about that is later, when we talk about uses and what kind of uses we want to see and where. So I do know, I just don't remember the details of how commercial was analyzed.
Because I do recall at some point someone mentioned, I had, I think I had asked about the, you know, currently we incentivize mixed use, and in the preferred, or in the alternatives, we were not incentivizing it with FAR levels. And I asked why, and I thought someone responded that it was because of the concern of commercial uses taking up sewer capacity. In Winslow, because it seemed like the plan, like the idea was that we want to push some commercial activity out at Day Road and not within the city where it's on sewer, and it was a sewer capacity issue or concern.
The Alternatives 2 and 3 did propose to lessen the amount of commercial that's required to take place in mixed-use projects. Partially, my memory wasn't, that it wasn't because of commercial uses in sewer. It was just because, right now, as some of you may be aware, our mixed-use FAR provisions are really difficult because they require a minimum amount of either residential or commercial space in a mixed-use project. So someone, at this time, in the core district, can't put up a mixed-use building with 10% commercial and 90% residential. And so because one of the things we were trying to do was to plan for more units, that was more of the the thinking behind reducing the amount, the amount of required commercial for new projects.
I might refer you to Table 3.1-2, which Planner Sutton directed us in the draft DEIS. It's on page 157, but it does say for Winslow Town Center under Alternative 1, that there are 67 jobs for commercial and industrial. And the commercial-industrial capacity is 26,716 square feet under Alternative 1, versus Alternative 2 at Den Centers, 370,654 square feet of commercial-industrial capacity. So, and again, under Alternative 3, distributed 275,904 square feet of a commercial-industrial capacity. So I think there's a square foot to jobs, to water usage, sewer consumption, based into that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ariel?
I just, I want to add on to this conversation and go through the math real quick, but I basically, I had the same question as Sarah, and then also what Chris commented. So let me just walk through the math. We are currently at 4,250 ERUs. With our second upgrade, we'd be at 6,050. Then new, we'd have 1,800 ERUs. This is for Winslow. So if we take 1,800 times .8, that equals 2,500 multifamily units. If you look at the 3.12 table, they actually have 2868 units.
Ariel, I don't think that's quite right, because we have 200 units remaining today. So it's actually 2,000. And if you divide by .8, then that's 2,500 for multifamily.
Okay. Well, the math, what I was doing with the math was, I was taking 2868 minus existing 592, and then it seems like that leaves 224 ERU units available. And I was thinking maybe that was planned for the commercial, kind of like what you were saying, Chris. I think maybe they did, it looks like they did plan for that. I'm guessing this Table 3.12 took into account the sewer, because the numbers are lining up. Is that what other people are seeing?
I'll, just to respond to that last point, when we were developing the alternatives, we were looking at just opportunity and transportation and, you know, what is the zoning now, et cetera. So we, we weren't designing the alternatives with any sort of, you know, we drafted them and said, like, and said, let's, let's upzone a little bit more here and a little bit less there, but still, you know, propose upzoning a little bit, and then run the numbers. And then we, you know, Alternative 3 is a higher, higher dense, higher intensity than what we have today, but not quite as high as Alternative 2. And, and the geography is a little different. So we weren't looking at the sewer, you know, we just wanted to academically analyze the alternatives against, you know, what we know about our utilities. But we weren't designing them to any sort of limit, right? Because we just wanted to measure them in as accurate a way as possible, knowing that there's a lot of choices before the Planning Commission and the City Council, and that, you know, there's lots of things that can be, that can be planned to happen with infrastructure over the years, depending on these land use choices that you make, you know? So, so if the numbers you know, are close, that's more of a coincidence, you know, because we, we didn't choose, we increased, we proposed for Alternative 2 to increase zoning in some areas, but we didn't triple zoning in some areas. We doubled it in the, like, two areas, you know, and we increased it by a little less. So I think...
That's helpful, Jennifer. I mean, I, although Chris said something, maybe I had my numbers wrong. I don't know. Chris, what were you saying about that?
I was just saying there's 200 in capacity still today. So when we go from, yeah, when you're looking at the capacity of the plant today, 4,250, you have to allow for the 200 that are remaining in that capacity as you carry it forward with each 900 ERU upgrade.
Okay. Yeah, that's true. But, yeah, I think Sarah's point of making sure that we're allowing for commercial. And Jennifer, do you think that, I mean, you have a square footage in there for commercial. Do you think that was aligned with the sewer when you were doing this? Like, do you think Public Works analyzed that? Or would we need to reanalyze that once we kind of have a better plan?
Well, Public Works and different city consultants for transportation and utilities have analyzed the alternatives after they were kind of solidified, you know, because they had to be able to have something firm to measure against. So the, yeah, so the methodology for Alternatives 2 and 3 does include commercial in Winslow. And it is higher because in several places, the overall FAR is higher than what's there today. But we weren't proposing something because of the sewer capacity, per se.
Okay, okay.
But we just, you know, we wanted to, so the utilities element kind of explains how utilities and sewer and water were evaluated against each alternative.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. That's helpful. I did have one more question. Chris just stepped away, but do we have an update on when we might be expecting or anticipating the groundwater management plan? And then along with that, do we anticipate a public participation process?
Good evening, HB Harper, again. I believe that council is planning to see first draft of a groundwater management plan next month, but I don't know more details than that.
If I remember correctly, from this past Tuesday's council meeting, it was April 18th. Was roughly expected completion, and I don't know if they made a decision on public participation. But that's my recollection for as good as it, as it is.
Gets harder every day. Yes.
Thank you, Peter.
Well, if we're, if we're moving on to the groundwater, I guess, I just had a question, not knowing a whole lot about that type of document, but it kind of relates back to what Ron and John were talking about at the beginning. But it seems like, although it's called a groundwater management plan, a lot of what people are eager to see is actually the analysis part. I mean, it seems like there's a analysis part and then an actual planning, you know, policy part. Is that, is that right? I guess in terms of the order of operations, it does seem like we should have information about the analysis of the aquifer and potential seawater intrusion and all that before doing the development standards that lead to, you know, population capacity or unit capacity, whatever it is. Whereas the policies that would help us conserve, seem like that could be following. So I think, to some extent, I agree with both of what you were saying, that it seems like, yes, parts of it probably would make sense to be informed. Parts of the policy, parts of the groundwater management would make sense to be informed by the comprehensive plan. But in order to do the comprehensive plan, it would be helpful to have the analysis portion of the plan completed so that we're understanding, you know, and I know that some of that we've seen already in terms of the 20 years, but my understanding is we're waiting for basically like the 100-year outlook. We have the 20-year outlook and we're waiting for the 100-year outlook. So I don't know if there's a question in there, but is that, is my understanding correct? Is it, is, will, what's seen, what we see, or what City Council sees on the 18th, will that include that analysis component?
I'm not sure, but the Friday before it will be in the packet.
Yeah.
I think that maybe some of your questions could be answered in a January 2025 memo that was provided to the Commission and the Council from the city manager and the Public Works Director. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it was at your January 23rd meeting or the special January 30th meeting. But it does describe the work to date, and it includes some information, the memo does, related to both the 20-year planning scenario and 100-year planning scenario. It's about It's about eight pages long. And I'll just say on page two, it kind of just, in the middle of the page, it describes the phases of a, generally of a groundwater management plan. Phase one, documenting existing conditions. Phase two, modeling scenarios that include future stresses and impacts on groundwater. And then phase three, developing strategies to mitigate impacts. And so what this paragraph in this memo, page two of the memo says is the first two phases of work are mostly complete. And I will say that the city has, and it describes the city's monitoring network in this memo because we have had a monitoring network for fifteen or 20 years, both with public wells and private wells with, you know, private property owners that have enrolled their well for part of the city's monitoring program. So we have a lot of data for a number of years. So I would just encourage you to, I think maybe some of the questions you have could be answered in this memo. And I'm sure the rest would be answered at that council meeting.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I think it will. You said that was part of our packet and is one of our January meetings?
It appears to be the January twenty-third one. However, there was, seems to be a document issue. It's taking extremely long to load that particular agenda. But.
It's a memo that's dated January thirteenth, which makes me think it's one of those, the last two meetings in January.
Yeah, it's not in the January thirtieth one. And it's not in the January ninth. So that leads me to believe it's January twenty-third, but it is still loading.
Sorry. And if you don't see it in your packet, then the city, then Renee probably emailed it to you.
Yeah, because I have a copy of the packet here and I'm not seeing it right offhand from the January twenty-third. But, you know, I think though, you know, as a takeaway, the, you know, whatever exercise we're performing here is trees don't grow to the sky. I mean, they may grow taller or shorter here. But what we're describing are constraints on the total growth. And if I recall from that memo, which is going to be an imperfect recollection because I can't put my hands on it, is that the preview of the groundwater management plan, we had questions on and we, in fact, directed those to the, Chris and our planning, not planning director, city, public works director. And, you know, kind of, I didn't really feel satisfied with the answers she got back. I asked for more. But the gist of it was that the capacity, I mean, it's not unlimited. There were not a picture of rosy health for our aquifers. There is seawater intrusion limits and they're being, you know, approached. There, we have Merton Cove and Fletcher Bay as closed by the Department of Ecology. This is not indicating a healthy groundwater picture, just at first glance. Now, I'm not an expert. I've heard, you know, and seen Melanie's presentation on this and she's spoken to us to this effect. There are concerns. And there is very little data for South Island where we're talking about even having that Fort Ward wastewater treatment plant. There's not a connectivity between the points of water access on the island. Every, every community is sort of on its own. So until we get those inner ties, and I know the Cape Hoods are doing some great work there, the city's partnering with them on that, we just can't think of it as a whole system where we can draw on any part of the bank account all the way to zero because locally it is fractured into each watershed.
Could I clarify something that Commissioner Garcia just said in relation to the basins for the Merton Cove and Fletcher Bay watersheds? Since some of your material was from the county, I, to prepare for the meeting, I wanted to, I talked with our public works water staff. So he clear, you know, so I talked about those two basins. And they are closed, but they are closed for new surface water rights, not for new groundwater rights. And that is, they're closed for new surface water rights. So think of someone, you know, requesting to draw water from a stream for some sort of commercial purpose. So we don't do that very often. And they are closed for, to help maintain in-stream flows in those two areas.
Downcutting or stream levels falling are related to the total deepwater aquifer. I just might point out as a final point there. And if we're talking to the county materials, I'd also bring up that, I just have a note here, that whatever solution we come up with, even though the state, I think, presumes that the, comprehend that the development regulations adopted under the act are presumed valid, there is still a requirement, I'm just trying to find it here, that they have to pass ecological review. And I can find the particular section. It's in a letter to the addendum from the county, twenty-twenty-two. I think I have it on hand. But, you know, just, we can say that we are zoning or planning however, you know, whatever exercise we want, but it still has to conform at a review to the not draw down our aquifer, to not exceed our capacity. So, and I can find that and share that with the council. I was going through the county website today.
I was at Melanie's groundwater management plan, heard public meeting that she had at the senior center. And the main things, the takeaways there were the aquifer recharge areas. And in the slideshow that was shared today, we do have maps of the aquifer recharge areas. So I would recommend that we definitely want to steer clear, obviously, of those areas. And those are most, most critical. We should put red lines around them. As well, I would say, are stream buffers. And then, so just basically, we want to follow our water lines and assure that we have, that we're keeping healthy waterways for the majority of our island. And then also important in that is our tree canopy. So I know we have the ARPA, the, Sarah, what is the ARPA, the acronym? So.
Aquifer Recharge Protection Area.
We have that, we have that already in place. So I think to the best of our ability, we want to keep most of our areas conserved with those in mind. Tree canopy, stream buffer, aquifer recharge areas. And then I think that as we have already been going down this path, that leads us to focusing on infill in the Winslow areas that are already built out, which I think many of us are already aware. I just wanted to state that again.
I did find this section. Do you mind if I cite it just for the record? So don't get lost later. So it's WAC three-sixty-five dash one ninety-six dash oh four. The standard of review. Comprehensive plans and development regulations adopted under the act are presumed valid upon adoption. No state approval is required. Okay, so that whatever we do here, they're going to presume that we've leveled it out, that we've balanced all the different factors that are in the GMA. And however, the local jurisdiction's periodic updates do need to meet the SEPA review. And this is based on a letter from Scott Deener. He was the SEPA responsible official for development services and engineering for Kitsap County. That future actions in conformance with Vision 2050, including those by local jurisdictions to incorporate allocated growth targets into their respective comprehensive plans, periodic updates will be subject to subsequent State Environmental Policy Act review, so SEPA review. So I just, that was interesting piece of framing that, one, these aren't imposed upon us by the state. They come out of an algorithm, they come out of an Excel spreadsheet. It treats all things equal and then Bainbridge, we're getting a share. However, it is our responsibility to balance all the different sections of the Growth Management Act against each other. And that includes, you know, the critical area, recharge areas that we touched on tonight, as well as environmental. And I can actually give you a list of them here. But, you know, I just wanted to be clear on those items that as we're looking at this, oh, here they are. Apologize, there's a lot. We're into a pretty deep conversation today. Ah, here we are. Well, the, and so this is from the GMA. I believe it's thirty-six seventy-eight dot oh two oh. And the following goals are not listed in any order of priority and shall be used exclusively for the purpose of guiding the development of comprehensive plans, development regulations, and where specified regional plans, policies, and strategies. And they include environment, public facilities and services, and historic preservation. And in addition to the non-housing related goals in that section, there are non-housing related requirements and policies in that section. And the mandatory elements is the land use element. This is what we have to do. They should provide for the protection of the quality and quantity of groundwater used for public water supplies. A capital facilities plan in element consisting of an inventory of existing capital facilities owned by the public entities, including green infrastructure, showing the locations and capacities of the capital facilities. So green infrastructure, that's our wildlands. And be a forecast of future needs for such capital facilities, the proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities and at least a six-year plan, they'll finance those capital facilities. So these public facilities or capital facilities are in fact, you know, everything, streets, roads, highways, sidewalks, housing, and the environment. I just really want to say a broad statement there that this is our job as the commission is to balance those population numbers that we're given against the local form factors and environmental constraints that we have. And I really do want to emphasize that because otherwise in 10 years, we're going to get another number from the county and we aren't going to be able to sustain it. So I don't want to go over that line without being really thoughtful. And then affordable housing has another element in the GMA that we're supposed to balance against. We just, we don't have that much in our bank account, I think, to give in total population. So we just want to spend it very wisely.
Okay, if I may, just try to summarize it down. We are playing with, we've been playing with a lot of like definitive numbers or numbers that at least give the illusion of definitive, of being definitive. Two thousand five hundred and fourteen, four thousand three hundred and thirty-five. What I am seeing in all of this is that, one, we are not going to be able to know anything definitive or have even close to definitive until we have some of the groundwater management plan in place. And also our comprehensive plan, preferred alternatives, development standards and zoning boundaries set. Those two things together will give us more clarity about what we're actually playing with. And this is, this is what I'm trying to boil down to is that everything that we're testing out, everything that has been in the preferred alternative and alternatives two and three is kind of pushing and testing the boundaries of our carrying capacity. It's kind of like, it's, we don't know where the exact line is, but we're, we're like, we're bumping up against it, maybe slightly going over it, maybe we're slightly under it. And I would just implore us to ask ourselves, is it wise to play with those boundaries when we don't really know what their true definitions are? Should that lead us to be a little bit more conservative in our overall population? And I know the counterargument to that is, well, what about affordable housing? Which is one of the main things that I personally care about in this. These numbers that we, these population and unit numbers that we've been playing with in alternatives two and three, to my understanding, are predicated on the idea that, those numbers are derived from, okay, if 10% of those was defined as affordable, if 10% of all units were defined as affordable, the only way to meet the affordability targets of HBE twelve-twenty is by zoning to that, that much increased density that would result in that, that large population number. We are basing, we are still like chasing this idea that, and feel free anyone to correct me, but we're still chasing this idea that 10% inclusionary zoning target is the method in which we will achieve our affordable housing goals, which that then results in these, these very large numbers. There are other ways to meet our targets that we are, the more time we spend on this kind of discussion, the more time we take away from debating and discussing and pitching those other methods besides the 10% inclusionary zoning. So I, from my perspective, the takeaway here is be more conservative than alternatives two and three as far as, you know, let's, let's try to get a lower overall number. So we're not testing, we're not so close up to our boundaries, our limits of carrying capacity, or our perceived boundaries. And let's really focus on that additional growth being affordable housing rather than market rate. Because what we're seeing, what we're, what we're predicating is this, you know, it's often touted and it's accurate or not, 11,000 additional people, population capacity. 90% roughly of that is market rate. 10% of that is affordable, as I understand the framework of the DEIS. If we change that core assumption of 10% inclusionary zoning being our primary method of achieving our affordable housing goals, then I don't think we need to worry about this 11,000 and pushing or exceeding our, our carrying capacity limits.
Just, I guess, to give a little nuance to that because I think, I think there is, people have been saying this, this thing that the inclusionary zoning doesn't actually get us. There's different arguments, right? It doesn't get us the affordable housing we need. Or if it does, it requires so much of the, you know, there's this nine-to-one thing, right, for the inclusionary zoning. But you were talking about other tools. The inclusionary zoning, from my understanding, doesn't address housing under, around eighty to one-ten AMI, right? And so we already need a different tool for that. And that, let's say, maybe that's a housing levy or some other way of us, of the community collectively funding that housing to be built. We also have a need, and actually a larger need in terms of the absolute numbers for the sort of middle income or the middle housing type, you know, the like 100 to 150 AMI. And I don't think, you mentioned we have other tools. I guess I'm not aware of other tools that we have for creating affordable housing within that range other than the inclusionary zoning model.
Middle housing?
No, inclusionary zoning, which I think takes the, in the form would probably often be middle housing or multifamily, you know, higher density multifamily housing in some areas, like maybe the ferry terminal. But I just, I heard, I thought I heard you say we don't need to worry about these targets so much if we don't, if we use some other tool in our toolbox other than the affordable, other than inclusionary zoning. And I'm not familiar with what.
I'm not, I'm not saying at the exclusion, sorry, the exclusion of the inclusionary zoning. That should be part of it. But it, right now, these numbers feel predicated on pure, like inclusionary zoning is the only tool we're using.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. What other tool is there for that, for that range, for that income range?
Eighty to one, one-ten, eighty to one.
No, 100 to 150.
100 to 150.
Or 100 to 120. Maybe I shouldn't go up to 150 because that's not within the, I don't think the mandate. I think the mandate goes up to 120. Although I think there are plenty of people who make 120 who still can't afford to live on Bainbridge. So if we're talking about the, there's, you know, the mandate, that's one thing. For me, it's also about sort of the overall interest in having a diverse community. But wherever that is, what I'm saying is like, above the level that we're. But wherever that is, what I'm saying is like, above the level that we're gonna, that would maybe be supported with a levy, but below the level that people can just afford to live here, there's a pretty big chunk of range, and it's a lot of the people who work on the island, I think, are probably in that range. I'm not aware of any other tool that we've discussed so far that's in the Housing Action Plan that creates those units other than inclusionary zoning. And if, if there is, I agree with you, we should be talking about that, because, like, if we could make, you know, if half of those could be, could be built some other way, then, then, then we've solved a lot of the population growth concerns.
And I'm not, I'm not saying we don't adopt inclusionary zoning, though.
But it sounds like you're saying that there's other things that we might consider, and I'm not sure what the, I'm just, I, I don't know what those are.
For the, for outside of those ranges, I mean, for eighty and below, it's, it's, for lack of a better term, it's a pot of money from, that needs to be identified somewhere.
Right, but those weren't, those are already not included in those eleven, I mean, those aren't generated by inclusionary zoning, I don't think, in the D E I S. Those are assumed to be, there's other ways that we get there, right? The inclusionary zoning, I think, I guess we should look at that, but I think we still need the inclusionary zoning to get a lot of the units that we want in the middle income range, is from my understanding. And maybe this is an extra presentation, but.
Ariel?
I was gonna add, I think, um, could we go on to the next portion, because it discusses this topic?
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away for kiddo bedtime, I will certainly listen to this, as I often do, as I always do, so, thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
Does IT mind sharing the presentation?
Or Renee, or whoever's doing it. Yeah, I think we have to build it, though, if it's eighty or below, and we might have to subsidize it above that or below that, I mean, ten percent just isn't enough yield.
Okay, if we can go, yeah, just go down to the housing portion. You can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so this is, this slide is showing by the numbers Bainbridge, and it's, the top slide is showing our Houseville twelve twenty allocation, and there's a green box around the low income and moderate income. I've done a brief analysis, and it seems like that's the majority of the housing that we need to plan for and that is most difficult for us to, to plan for in this comprehensive plan. So, right now, if we look at middle income, that green checkmark was supposed to go by middle income and above middle, but it got out of the spot, out of its spot. So, we have those two levels, we pretty much have those covered, middle and above middle. So, that's, accounts for six hundred and ninety-eight households, or housing units. If you look at the total extremely and very low income housing required, affordable, these, these units will probably, most likely be covered by city-owned property and partnerships with local nonprofits and city. And then, what I have here is affordable housing overlay, F A R, and height increases. So, those, those tools will assist with the total extremely and very low income housing required. So, we're probably looking at the ferry site, possibly the Suzuki site, and then other partnerships. So, that is a total of eight hundred and sixty-seven. So, then, that leads us down to total low income and moderate. And so, we have two hundred and seventy-two low income, and then a hundred and forty moderate income, which I've put is most likely closer to market rate. And low income would be that affordable housing overlay zone. So, when you break it all down by the numbers, we have four hundred and twelve units that are most critical that we need to plan for. So, that's significantly lower than the amounts that we are looking at right now, so I just wanted to share that information with everyone. So, just, just to summarize again, the six hundred and ninety-eight middle income and above middle, we have that checkmark. The next, the next one, hopefully, we will cover that based on, with our city-owned property and partnerships. So, the most critical is that, those four hundred and twelve units. And then, next slide, please. So, that leads us to this really critical question, which we were already starting to have, which is, how is density a factor in creating more affordable housing? Now that we have these numbers in place and we know what our goals are in terms of housing units, where do we go from here? And what goals and policies should be considered to meet our affordable housing requirements and goals for our community? So, a question, where do we go from here is, you know, do we just want to meet Houseville twelve twenty, or do we have a vision for Bainbridge that is different outside of Houseville twelve twenty? I want to add a little plug really quickly, I've been reading an amazing book, which is Cities as a Sustainable Ecosystem, and they talk about the importance of having a vision, and they have ten principles that they focus on. And so, I'm just asking us to take a higher, kind of a higher level, and look at these ten principles. Vision, economy and society, biodiversity, ecological footprints, model cities on ecosystems, sense of place, empowerment, partnerships, sustainable production and consumption, governance, and hope, and that's from the City of Melbourne. So, that's just an example of where do we go from here, is, what is, what is our vision for the City of Bainbridge? Is it just Houseville twelve twenty, is it just ticking off the comprehensive plan, or is it a larger vision? And then, next slide, please. So, we have some optional goals and policies. As many of you know, I've worked at Marin County and worked on affordable housing, so I kind of have a little bit of background in this. And I've dug in and done some research on what are some options here in the state of Washington. And one is inclusionary zoning, that's what we've, we've been talking about. And this requires developers to set aside a percentage of units as affordable. We can offset this by offering F A R and height increases. And so, there are, I reached out to M R S C, there's a number of cities in the state of Washington that are doing inclusionary zoning. This, yes, this cannot be the only tool in our tool belt, however, this assures us that we will at least receive a portion of our affordable housing requirements through inclusionary zoning. It is a requirement, there is absolutely no cost to the city, because it's a requirement of the developers. And we can decide, is it five percent, ten percent, twenty percent? Is there a threshold where if you have twenty units or more? So, we can make that decision. The City of Portland is doing it, they've had, they have a really great program where they, and they, they do require that it's, some of their requirements are under, are sixty percent AMI, and then they give them higher F A R and higher height, and then they have another step that's at eighty percent. And then, if they're not able to do inclusionary zoning, another option is an in-lu fee, and that in-lu fee goes directly into a city trust fund. That trust fund would feed affordable housing on our island. So, it's really important for affordable housing developers to show local, local funding match. This would be a guaranteed money going into our housing trust fund, showing our commitment on this island to affordable housing. So, I think it's really important that we have inclusionary zoning and an option for an in-lu fee. Next is kind of a new idea, affordable housing overlay zone, and this would be an opportunity for, for Winslow, where you take an entire area, and then you allow an increase in F A R and height for, in exchange for affordable housing at certain income levels. So, those are three things, and we know that we're not going to meet our affordable housing based on, it's not going to be one thing, we need a number of things in our tool belt. And then, the final thing, and the OFM, Department of Commerce, has talked about this, is different types, looking at different types of housing. And they have said that building different types of housing will meet these income requirements, that, that is allowed in this comprehensive plan update. So, middle housing, we should definitely look at middle housing code, OFM has a code, or I mean, Department of Commerce has a code already written that we could adopt. Cottage housing, we, City of Bainbridge, we had a cottage housing code that is almost complete, we just need to put it into, into action. And then, cohousing, I don't know if any of you, if, how many went to the H R B presentation, there was a cohousing developer there. That woman was able to get the housing at extremely, she was able to meet extremely low income levels with the cohousing, because they share, they share kitchens, they share common space, so just, the development of cohousing is less expensive per square foot. And then, we also have ADUs. And so, is there, can you, I'm not sure if there's another slide, that's the extent of that slide. So, policies to review, we have affordable housing overlay, this is an example, City of Oakley, California, that's an example. And so, these are just links that everybody can look at, housing trust fund, we've got Everett, we've got Kirkland, and Luffy, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, Seattle, and then inclusionary zoning, a number of municipalities have that as well. So, next, next slide. So, in terms of housing typology and code samples, we have the middle housing ordinance at the OFM guide, accessory dwelling unit, also, OFM has provided us with that. We have a cohousing ordinance from Bellingham, and then also from College Place, and then Olympia also has a cohousing ordinance. And these would all be things that would go in our housing element. And next slide, I think that's it. Okay, so that concludes the presentation on housing and kind of intended to spark the conversation, where do we go from here?
I have a question for Jennifer, about the, the numbers Ariel presented. So, we have a capacity of five hundred and ninety-two units in Winslow, in the Winslow Town Center. And it, in the D E I S, it said approximately four hundred and fifty of those units could be in moderate-density multifamily housing. And so, my question is, well, let me go to the commerce, the guidance for updating your housing element for commerce. They also use the term, they use moderate density, low-rise multifamily, mid-rise multifamily, and they each mean something different. So, in the D E I S, when it says we have four hundred and fifty units of moderate density multifamily, is that used in the same way that commerce uses moderate density, which would be townhomes, duplex, triplex, and quadplex?
I wouldn't think, well, if, for the R eight and R fourteen zone, I see those moderate densities of commerce lining up with the capacity in the R eight and R fourteen zones for alternative one, but, and, well, that's the thing about our existing zoning code, is that you, we don't tell you, you could build townhomes, you could build apartment buildings up to the maximum building height, that right now is either three or four stories, depending on where you are. So, I think that.
So, some, some of those units could be considered low-rise, which is three to four, I think, stories, and then mid-rise is four and up?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, two, low-rise, two to three floors, of walk-up apartments and condos. And if I'm reading table three point two dash ten correctly, which has the dwelling units per zone in Winslow Town Center for the different alternatives, a lot of the, in alternative ones, or existing, the majority of that capacity, that multifamily capacity is in the Core and High School Road. So, the reason I'm asking this is, so Ariel, in her presentation, attributed the five hundred and ninety-two units, which includes the four hundred and fifty moderate multifamily that I'm questioning, have questions about, as being attributing that to the middle and above-middle income level. But if some of those four hundred and fifty moderate multifamily units could be low-rise and mid-rise buildings, so apartments and condominiums, according to the, the chart I always asked about, that I've kept that you gave me, I've not lost it yet, for the, the assumed affordability level for the capacity analysis, low-rise and mid-rise housing types count towards zero to eighty percent. And so.
Does it, does, at the, on that commerce document, does it say at the top of the column that additional policies or programs are needed to achieve the lower income?
So, there's zone category, and then the housing type, and then there's lowest potential income level served, and there's a column for market rate, and a column for with subsidies and/or incentives. The last column, though, says assumed affordability level for capacity analysis. Zero, low income, zero to eighty percent AMI, and permanent supportive housing for low-rise and mid-rise multifamily. So, if.
Is the helpful, do, do we want to put that on the screen?
I, I mean, I only have the paper version, I'm not electronic.
I don't have it, I, I don't have it drawn, pulled up, but I can do that while we talk.
Remember when there used to be like transparency slides?
Yes, that would be very fast in this moment.
So, while Jennifer's doing that, maybe, just, maybe recite here that we talked about ADUs, or the presentation had ADUs, affordable housing overlays, inclusionary zoning, in-lu fees for the developer, which pretty much, you know, pay to play, you get additional consideration for, for the fees. I didn't, I didn't hear, there wasn't mentioned a levy or a real estate excise tax, both, which I, I'm actually, I'm glad, because we need to protect the affordability and livability of residents that already live here in this process. It's weird to think about it, but they're the last generation who were able to purchase an affordable home on Bainbridge, and so they're part of that population we're trying to protect. And I was curious if, and you had heard anything back on the motion that you made last time, Sarah?
Not yet.
Because I, I might, because we've been talking a lot about numbers tonight, I did bring a motion at an appropriate time, I'd like to make it. But I do want to just kind of remind everyone that we have all the tools on our tool belt, right? You know, we, Carpenter has their favorite tool, it might be a saw, it might be a hammer, but you don't build a house with just that tool. The, I, I really want, we mentioned Marin, you know, other places where they found themselves limited in the ecologic capacity to create new housing have placed moratoriums, in effect, where, for ten years, while they figure it out, you know, that, that is a valid range of action here, that is a tool in our belt. But, my motion is, I move that we get an independent legal opinion on whether the City of Bainbridge Island in its comprehensive plan update is legally obligated by the Growth Management Act to ensure that Kobe actually achieves the housing allocation numbers set forth in, on Appendix F of the Kitsap Countywide Planning Policies, or alternatively, whether the Growth Management Act simply requires that the update provides sufficient capacity of land and include policies and provisions to permit or allow for the achievement of those targets, consistent with Kobe's obligation to balance and harmonize the multiple goals and/or requirements of the Growth Management Act. So, it, kind of, it's a compliment, I think, to your motion, because I think, to Peter's point, we're spending a lot of time. point, we're spending a lot of time, you know, trying to get down into the weeds, we're all very detail-oriented thinkers. But we really need to level set what success looks like here, or we'll just never get out.
Agreed. Are you making that motion now?
I just-
Or later? I mean, I know you said it-
Yeah, I said it, yeah. I'm happy to say it again, but is it now the appropriate time? Because I think that it's a second baton on that upward rope.
Okay. Well, I would second it.
Okay. And I can send the motion in its full text to the staff.
Are you still working on?
I have it, I found it, and I can put it on the screen, if that's helpful.
I'll finish this up, and then we'll get to that. Ariel?
I just want to say, I know Chris's motion, there might be mixed feelings on it, or different perspectives, but I am in full support of it. I think it's been a question that has been brought up by multiple people in our community, and I think it's a question that deserves to be answered, so I am definitely in support of it.
Peter?
Yeah. Kind of a funny position here, but I, I don't necessarily agree that it's the best use of time and resources to try to challenge the numbers, because I do believe that there is a moral and ethical imperative to try, to strive towards as much affordable housing on the island as possible. And I think, just saying we can't meet, or just saying those numbers are not applicable, feels like it's kind of like, well, I guess we don't really, it gives us a little bit of a reason not to do it. That said, I'm always in favor of more information, and I don't want to, I, what I was planning with this, with this motion, or what I was originally thinking, was abstaining from it, like just not getting in the way of it, not necessarily being for it, but I believe with the fact that we are down to four people tonight, that if I were to abstain, it would actually fail, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if it's-
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, so it has to be a majority of the quorum. Okay. Yeah, I-
So, what I feel like I heard you say was almost like we're looking to be exempt from the requirements. And I don't think that's, that, because I also saw an email kind of implying that's what my motion was about. It wasn't about whether or not we're exempt, it's what are we actually, what is the actual requirement? Because I think it's being read differently by different people, and I don't, and I don't think it's about wanting affordable housing, or middle housing or not, I think it's about, for us, trying to get through this process, especially with this looming, like this pressure for this deadline, to, I think, to know what is it we actually need to do. I, it's not about an exemption and not having to meet it, and-
I think it actually gives us greater latitude to address affordable housing, and that's part of the reason I make it, is because then, we can look at, you know, it's not just this portion out of, you know, what may be all of our possible future growth, that's affordable housing, but maybe a larger portion of it. Maybe we should weight that, knowing that as we move into the future, that resource is going to be, you know, in 10 years and 20 years, all the more precious, and that we should conserve it and not just let it go to market right now. But I, I don't know, I mean, it's, I really would love to have that opinion, so that we can start to say, okay, you know, we're, we're either in this framework that we've gotten, and we have to make this work, or we are, as local land use quasi-judicial officers, on the task of making this the right fit for Bainbridge.
Yeah.
And the situation that we're in, well, ecologically, culturally, historically, economically-
Yeah.
As a community.
I think my only feeling is like, I just would hate, I would hate to go below these numbers, I think, is that, that's where I'm at.
I don't, but I, again, I don't think it's about hitting the target numbers, it's, it's the manner in which we plan for them.
Yeah.
For example, do we have to do, you know, yes, you are required to implement a program like inclusionary zoning that tries, I mean, won't guarantee it, versus, we, actually, early in our presentations, we heard from staff, it was about building in the capacity. Some of the up zones were just about building capacity for potential future levies. So, I think it's, I just think we need to know, I personally would like to know, what do we need to do for the update? Because we have these, these other pressures, I mean, we've heard about, you know, they need to have something approved, to get money for sewer upgrades, so, I mean, people are still talking, still, about, we're trying to get it done by June 30th, which is crazy at this point. And so, I mean, people are really hoping that that will happen, I don't think it will. If we have to address everything we're trying, we're being told we need to address.
Yeah.
If, if we don't have to do everything we're being told we need to do as part of the update, but some of it can come after the update, for example, if we can have the goals and policies, and then work on the development code, comp plan update can get approved, whatever needs to happen, can happen, and then we can, we don't have the time pressure, we can work on the development code at a more reasonable pace.
Yeah. Okay. I, I actually really appreciate all of those points, and I know Ariel's got her-
Ariel, do you have something before we vote, or after?
Just really, I just want to reiterate what Chris and Sarah are saying, is that I think it actually does give us more latitude, and I know, we've had a lot of discussions about the vision for Bainbridge, and that's why I bring up that book, Cities as a Sustainable Ecosystem. I think it gives us more latitude to actually focus on our vision, which includes affordable housing, and how, how best for Bainbridge are we going to meet those, meet those needs? So, that's why I'm in support of it.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Just one, one last, one last, like, hypothetical question, let's say, okay, so the motion is for an independent counsel, right?
Independent legal opinion is what-
Independent legal opinion. This is theoretically one, or one lawyer, or a firm. Are we, if they say, no, we don't need to meet this, that is not the final word, per se. It's like, do we want to-
Law is never the final word.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, do we want to risk not getting our comp plan certified? If, if, in that hypothetical, where we're, where we're told by this independent legal source that we do not need to meet these targets, and so, we do not include-
We're not trying to not meet the targets.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. That's, yeah, I'm sorry, I keep getting hung up on that.
I might go back to the presumption of validity.
Yeah.
It's the manner in which we're planning for it.
Okay. All right. Then, end of, end of my concerns. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of-
I don't know if we've heard the motion.
Okay, I can repeat the motion.
Repeat it.
Okay. I used the large print version, though, for myself, because it's been a long day. I move that we get an independent legal opinion on whether the City of Bainbridge Island, in its comprehensive plan update, is legally obligated by the Growth Management Act to ensure that City of Bainbridge Island actually achieves the housing allocation numbers set forth on Appendix F of the Kitsap Countywide Planning Policies, or alternatively, whether the Growth Management Act simply requires that the update provides sufficient capacity of land and include policies and provisions to permit or allow for the achievement of those targets, consistent with City of Bainbridge Island's obligation to balance and harmonize the multiple goals and/or requirements of the Growth Management Act.
I was the second.
I have a question. Chris, I know, I thought, I don't hear any reference to sole-source aquifer.
I, because that's one of the considerations that's balanced and harmonized within the GMA, is my thinking, and I also, I think, within that, do not refute the House Bill 1220, as it's included now, as part of-
I think that we should add that information, so that whoever's reviewing it will take into account that we're sole-source aquifer, because I think that's the basis of the question. So, I don't know, if you, you can add that in there, or if you feel comfortable adding it, or do you, I just want to make sure that part is not missed.
Okay.
What, what did you want to add?
I think that what our chair is suggesting is that the City of Bainbridge Island has a sole-source aquifer in its comprehensive plan update, but I think that limits it too much.
I would not support that motion, because this is not about us being a sole-source aquifer. It's just simply about how, how is the state expecting any jurisdiction, we're asking the question, but any jurisdiction, the manner in which we plan, is it, you said, having like the land capacity?
Yeah.
You know, early in, or other meetings, we talked about the approach.
Okay.
It's not about being a sole-source aquifer. That's when people are trying to, you know, get exempt, and this is not about being exempt from anything.
And I'm not, through my motion, trying to exempt us, but rather clarify the ability for this body to balance and harmonize the goals, the sole-source aquifer, the environmental goals, the housing goals, affordability goals, together.
That makes sense. Thanks for clarifying that, Chris.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, passes unanimously. Okay, Jennifer, do you have that chart?
Do you have a preference for how I share it? Like, this one, or this one, or this one?
Just choose.
It's right here? Yeah, that's it. Oh, I didn't know if it would make Chair Burley go away. That, that show, okay. The document that we're just putting on this screen can be found from the Department of Commerce's Growth Management Act Planning for Housing page, and this is Housing Element Update Guidance, Book Two. So, we're looking at Exhibit 13, which is a table for building types in relation to So, I think what we were talking about is this row here, correct, the low-rise multifamily. And so, how this overall Commerce guidance works, is it helps, you know, all kinds of communities with different levels of staffing, and budget and support are doing comprehensive plan updates. And so, this guidance can help communities equate different building types to what kind of incomes could be served by those building types, with or without additional support. So, I don't know if everyone can see on my little cursor, for these low-rise multifamily, says, without supports, those might serve between 80 to 120% AMI. With subsidies, or supports, or incentives, could serve lower incomes below 80. And so, Commerce guidance is that we could, quote-unquote, count those for some of our affordability. And so, you can see that mid-rise multifamily, or high-rise tower, and how this all breaks down, related to what a new building at that building type might produce without affordable housing requirements or programs, and what it could produce, what, who it could serve with additional programs, so.
So, when I'm looking at the last column, where it says that for the capacity analysis, you can count low and mid-rise multifamily towards your 80% and below. So, I'm just wondering why some of our 450 multifamily units in our 592-unit capacity can't count towards some of that allocation?
So, so some of it, in alternative, we're talking about alternative one here, some of it, we know will count towards that below 80, because the city had begun to explore and had decided that 625 Winslow was going to be an affordable project, although at the conceptual phase. So, that decision had been made, and was assumed to move forward. It's still in the conceptual phase, and that, and that project is in the core district existing.
I mean, I know you might not have like parcel-level detail, but as it's, as it's proposed with that number of units, it would require a density increase, which would add, so that would actually, could actually even add a little bit to the capacity? Because it, like, they need FAR, they need additional FAR in height to build what they're planning, right?
The, they need additional FAR, the, the presentation to the council-
And that additional FAR was not part of the analysis that came up with 592 units?
Not for alternative one, no. So, the, the, yeah, the, the January 21st, I think the January 21st council meeting has information about the current thinking for the conceptual planning for 625. And although it doesn't, the information says it doesn't need additional height compared to what is allowed today at 45 feet, it does need additional FAR.
Okay.
I think it's 2.45 FAR is what is planned, and as we've mentioned before, that's an interesting project to look at the information on, because that project, you know, has very little low land cost.
Well, so, I'm not, I'm, I'm not even trying to get into like the feasibility, like, I mean, it says, even in this chart, like, it marked, without subsidies or incentives, it's not going to be 80% and below. I'm strictly talking about our capacity analysis, and this idea that the 592 units in Winslow can only really be allocated to the middle and above-middle income allocations. Because, and I, and I, I had done a similar analysis that Ariel had done, that like, oh, it's this low and moderate income level, because there's nothing for that, but then, but that might not be the case, because some of this, some of those 450 units, I mean, for, as an example, strictly an example, we could require people to build three floors and up, like three or four floors. We could say, we don't want any more tall, skinny townhomes. I mean, we could make those kinds of changes, and use, and use the capacity we have better, instead of just assuming that 592- instead of just assuming that 592 is going to be, um, 120% and above. Couldn't we?
Per- perhaps if we updated our programs to enable that. I mean, I would just, uh, the affordable projects that we have worked on, um, in the last 10 years, most of them have had Housing Resources Bainbridge Community Land Trust involvement.
But see, this is getting to the question.
And received a density bonus above what the underlying zoning is through one, like usually through the HDP program.
But this is kind of getting to the heart, I think, of what we're trying to get information on, which is, what do we need, what does the state want from us for our capacity analysis versus what, what all do we need? What all, what are all the tools and pieces and money we need to actually create it? So, I mean, they're, they're two, two different things. I totally understand what you're saying. Land is donated or sold at a reduced rate, um, city contributes property, that's a different, actually, actualizing, I don't know if that's a word, the low-income housing, that is a different question than what I'm asking, which is, this, it looks like the state allows us to count those kinds of units towards that capacity without determining yet how it will be subsidized or incentivized. That, that, yes, that one column, it, you have, with subsidies and/or incentives, but they have a second, well, a fifth column, that for the capacity analysis, for the purposes of the capacity analysis, low-rise and multi, low-rise and mid-rise multifamily structures can count towards 0 to 80% AMI. Without also determining along with that, it doesn't say, there's not an asterisk in that col, I looked, I tried to see if I was missing something, I, I didn't, I had the paper, um, I had this, but I actually went into the document and scrolled through looking for, to make sure I wasn't missing anything. I didn't see any kind of asterisk or note that in addition for it to count towards your capacity analysis, you also have to identify the subsidies and incentives you're going to use. And so I'm just, I mean, I think it's, I think it's obvious we're, well, for me, I'm, it's the numbers. It's what are we, what is the number we're planning for? You know, Ariel's done a good job here of trying to sort out, you know, the existing capacity and the income levels. And I just, I just think that some of the capacity in Winslow, I don't think we should assume that it cannot be counted towards the 80% and below levels. Because, just because I think that's what this, this says. I think that's what that document says. I can't see if Ariel.
Does she, Ariel?
She does have her hand raised.
You're on mute, Ariel, you're muted.
Yeah, when you're sharing things and you're, like, my face right now is taking up the entire screen. It's kind of interesting. So, um, what I was going to say is that we've reviewed some of the cities that already submitted and have been approved by PRSC. We saw exactly this, that they had, um, they met the requirements through policies and goals, and their policies and goals were based on that chart from OFM where they said, "We meet it by, by and through these types of housing." So that, so reading their, um, the other cities that have been approved and reading how they met their requirements, I'm, I guess I'm agreeing with Sarah that, um, this is, this is a way that we can do this is we, we, um, have, we assume certain affordability limits by the type of housing. Is that, does that summarize, Sarah, what you were?
I think so.
Saying, thinking, yeah, and I, and that's, I feel like that's 100% what we saw in these other municipalities that have already gone through.
So, um, in that same, in Book Two, in the housing element, so there's a Chapter Nine called Implementing and Monitoring Your Housing Element. And it says in the third paragraph, "This chapter provides guidance for what is expected to be implemented with a comprehensive plan versus after." And so, when you read further down, it talks about what's required is that the ra, the comprehensive plan and development regulations provide sufficient land capacity to accommodate their allocated housing need. And so, that doesn't, it doesn't say, "And programs and incentives, um, to realize it." And I think, I think in our policies, we can have, like our, our goals and our goals and policies, like these are the kinds of incentive programs we want to adopt, um, as an example. But I don't know that it's expected that you are adopting those incentive programs at the same time.
I think that falls to legislative harm of the city to some degree, right? I mean, we can, we can recommend.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, but if we are going to adopt a new zoning map as part of this effort, the zoning map alone does not, like, if we were to adopt, if we were to take our existing zoning map and upsize a few parts here and there, densify a few, you know, without any policies or plan, uh, programs that like guide that towards, hey, that increased density is going to go towards affordable housing or is more, is going to be more likely than not to be affordable housing, then we're just kind of.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's where a tool, maybe Deputy Mayor Quitzland has talked about this affordable housing overlay where you, you aren't actually changing your base.
Yep.
Unless it's an affordable housing project.
Which I, I, I am more and more thinking that's, that's where this goes, honestly.
Yeah.
That essentially, from a market, pure market rate perspective, the zoning map doesn't change. Maybe there's like boundary changes so that we, we make it align with the affordable housing overlay, uh, zoning map, if you will, the alternate real, the alternate version of the zoning map. But any densification, any increase in, in our numbers or FAR or conversion to FAR is purely on the affordable housing overlay zones or zone.
I, I might be able to just bring on a little anchor clarity. I know we're running, running to the end of our clock here, but I love the discussion. This is what it does, is it takes hours and hours to get to the point that we're actually, you know, making the decision. And Ariel, I apologize, I didn't see your hand until just now, but in WAC 365-196400, Mandatory Elements, Section One, Requirements, A, "The comprehensive plan must include at a minimum a future land use map. The plan must contain descriptive text covering objectives, principles, and standards used to develop the comprehensive plan." And the con, now C, "The comprehensive plan must be an internally consistent document, and all the elements shall be consistent with the future land use map." And D, "A comprehensive plan must include each of the following sub-items: a land use element, a housing element, a capital facilities plan element, a utilities element, and a transportation element." It would seem then that the GMA does not require comprehensive plans to include detailed zoning maps, but rather that it expressly calls for a future land use map, which is probably something more general, designating land uses at a higher level rather than drilling down into the specific degree of residential density. For example, that would be characteristic of a zoning map. I don't know if that's helpful, but I've been researching.
I, I, I agree it's possible, um, that we might, there might need to be some small upzoning to provide the capacity, but it's, but it, to me, looks very different than an upzone on the level that's required to make an inclusionary zoning program successful. It's very, very different, so.
Exactly, yeah.
So I, I agree that we, you know, it's possible, likely, we, we might need to do a little bit of upzoning, but just, but not on the level that's been presented.
Yeah. But at the same time, any of that, any of that upzoning in the affordable housing overlay zone needs to be at a level where it would even, where it, the very minimum will pencil out for groups like HRB and, you know, and, and I'm not even saying pencil out for market rate housing. I'm just, I'm just saying, it has to be dense enough for e, for our, our affordable housing-focused institutions in the community to be able to, you know, a reasonable assumption that, yes, they will be able to, to find a way to fund that, or that will be profitable in one way or another, um, or sustainable in one way or another. So, yeah, that's, that's, I think that becomes the tricky part. Where, where I'm just not sold is taking our base zoning map and just saying, paint broad strokes and say, "Upzone here, 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 here," and assume that 10% of it is going to be, uh, affordable. Yeah.
Ariel?
Thank you. You guys are having such a great discussion. I wish I was there. I wanted to add a couple of things, which I think this is why the, I keep going back to the vision, but I know some of you, some of us all join the Planning Commission because we really have, um, a vision for, for Bainbridge Island. And I, um, I'm like, where am I, it's getting late. So, okay, one, one thing that this allows us to do, these different building types, is it, we can also set a, like bookends, if you will, like we could set a minimum, like anything within a certain core area of Winslow is a requirement of this density, this many stories, and it looks like this, and that's, that's kind of more my vision is, is painting out what, what our city looks like in the future and how it meets, um, all of the needs of residents, like in terms of parks and transportation and, um, and walkability. All of those things I think are a part of that. And I think if we step away from the base requirements and look more at these different housing types, it allows us more latitude to paint this, paint this picture. So I just wanted everyone to think, think about the idea of bookends and that we can, we can also set a minimum amount that we think, um, like the Oliver, in my opinion, is not, was not quite dense enough for that piece of land. I think that it could have been built differently, um, to better align with, with, um, kind of the vision for Bainbridge. Let me just say that. So my hope for our upcoming comprehensive plan is that we, we can put in place, whether it be form-based code or that we have the time and forethought to think about the future, the, the core of Winslow and what it looks like. So that's my little piece on that. And then I see John sitting there, and I was wondering if he would be kind enough, maybe he, Sarah, what do you think? Could he share a little bit? He's done some research on the affordable housing zone overlay.
John, do you want to tell us about your overlay zone idea?
There's a lot of things I have wanted to contribute one way or another. There've been so many, you have created a logjam of things that individually, they get in the way of each other. It's hard to, hard to, hard to, uh, move forward with so many things on your minds. I want to say something about, uh, the, the phrase that Sarah used, "The manner in which we plan for things." That is crucial. Remember you're planning, and planning is essential to getting things built. But you're worrying about, are we committing to too many, too many buildings? And that's, you're getting way ahead of where you're supposed to be. We are obligated to plan for and accommodate housing for the full spectrum of economic, uh, participants in the community. That's, that's a very big commitment. It's a, it's an ethical commitment, and it is a strategic commitment for the betterment of this community. But making that commitment, an earnest commitment, and I think you're all really totally in earnest about what we're obligated to do, what we have an opportunity to do. But accommodate is a word that I have, I don't believe that the Department of Commerce is willing to define exactly what that means. It's up to the political will and the capacity in economic terms. It's up to the, up to the community to go as far toward accommodating a growing population as possible and make plans for not just the market, the existing market, which is defined by our community and is defined by other communities in the region. We have obstacles that they don't face in, um, in Bremerton. Bremerton has obligations and, and, uh, they have a homeless problem much greater than we will ever see on Bainbridge Island, I hope. Uh, and they are addressing that homeless problem, and they're addressing the, uh, the need to, to provide housing for people who are destitute or without resources or very low resources and people in recovery and so on. I participated in the allocation of, uh, grants, grant fund, funds to, we did this last, last year, and I'm, I'm looking forward to this year. I don't know what kind of money we're going to have in the present, uh, national and state-level circumstances, but, uh, there are these grant programs that, that make certain things possible. And grant, a large, substantial grant was given to Helpline House, not for housing, but for essential social services and, uh, and care. So there, we need to, we need to be ready to call upon all of these resources, and we need to go to our, be ready to go to our community for a bond issue. That's going to be one, one ingredient. When we can establish credibility and a, and a, and a, a vision for building for our, uh, the betterment of our community, as Ariel was saying, very, having a vision and presenting that vision as something that does not threaten our aquifer because we understand our aquifers and we understand our system and we understand what, uh, what our utility, utilities provide for us. We're a little spooked now, but we will see, uh, We're a little spooked now, but we will see, I believe, I've said that, I've heard this time and time again from Public Works Director, where's Nikki? April 18th will be the, is the release date for a completed, but not, not final, signed and sealed and delivered, a final readable draft with all the chapters completed. We've been waiting on the last chapter, which has a lot to say, I believe, with mitigations and, and, you know, the, the plant, the, the implementation process for our improvements or, or the, the application of what we know in the model. But all these things, there's a kind of planning and a kind of visioning in the ground letter management plan that is very different from what we're concerned with here. And I keep saying, we shouldn't, we shouldn't make one thing dependent on another, because they, they, they go forward along different tracks. And we have a, we have an obligation now to plan 20 years out for a 10-year period in which we will see how far we go, and we'll know more in 10 years when we have to do this all over again. Hopefully, it won't be quite so painful, because we will have solved some problems, put some things in place. So there's that, there's that. Now, what, what's involved in what we will be, what we, what we need to do to be certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council and Commerce, Commerce and the Puget Round Regional Council, different bodies communicating with each other in the review process? When we submit our Winslow subarea plan and our comprehensive plan and all the supporting documentation and the long-range planning that, you know, the plant, the housing action plan and so on, all of these things, we will be reviewed, not in a nitpicky way. I looked at the next agenda for the April 3 meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council, the growth management hearing, or growth management policy board, which I sit on and I always go in in person when I can to participate in the, in the discussion. Two of the city, several cities, it must, it's almost, it's almost 10 cities whose plans are being, they have been reviewed, and the body then accepts, makes a motion to accept the review. And two of these cities, University Place and the city of Mill Creek, these are cities comparable to us, more affluent than most of the municipalities on the list, and approximately our size. What does, at the end of the certification report for University Place, the city, the PSRC found that the city of University Place Comprehensive Plan is substantially consistent with the transportation-related provisions of the Growth Management Act. The city is encouraged to address areas identified for additional work in upcoming plan updates and other planning efforts. These may be areas where additional work would make the plan more consistent with the Growth Management Act, and areas that may be necessary to address prior to the 2029 Growth Management Act Implementation Progress Report. So we have that, you know, there's a, we have, we've got a six-month grace period, and we're going to go beyond that limit at the end of June, but we're working toward our goals. And then we have a five-year period in which our progress in actually getting accommodation done, that's going to be measured. And we will presumably have the housing, the Finch Place project to, to talk about, and the police station site, perhaps not completed, but on the way, with a certain number of households accommodated and so on. And there'll be others that we'll have in the works, I'm sure. So let's, let's try to be methodical and define the, the zoning districts in Winslow and the heights that are, that are appropriate for this, this one and that, that other one. And where we, where we see different housing forms, appropriate to the high school road area, we, we can, we can envision within 20 years a thorough redevelopment of, of the Safeway parking lot and other, other buildings there and so on. And we can, we can envision changes in the Ferry Terminal District, which we've, you've talked about, the master planning idea, all of the, all the work that you've done in a very painstaking and careful way is, it's a huge achievement. And just complete the pattern and, and don't worry too much about what the, what the code will look like to make things happen. Don't worry too much about making inclusionary zoning work. The council has never expressed, I'm speaking not just for myself, but what I've listened to other people say, the council has never expressed enthusiasm for 10% affordable housing and 90% market rate. The people, people in the business, Greg Van Patten, Maria Williams, people who know how to, how to produce a pro forma, they know what will pencil and what won't, and they say, let's forget about it, except for the very highest level of affordable housing, however we define it, which could, which can combine with, I would imagine, not the luxury, luxury apartments, because it needs to be a wholesome, it needs to be an internally consistent community of people at different income levels, some of whom will be, you know, the, well, I could go on and on. This is all, I hope, sort of for the good of the order, because you are doing so much good work, and you kind of have to try to be methodical and, and tentative at the same time. You're making, you're making stabs in the dark some part of the time, and, but go ahead and do it, and, and let it down and move on to the next, next problem, I think. I do think that this, the overall, the affordable housing overlay zoning will work. And I think it will limit the amount of excess capacity that was built into the draft environmental impact statement. The final environmental impact statement is going to be very, very different, because it's going to have very different boundaries, very different estimates of where, where housing is going to be and so on and so forth. So I think, I think just, just keep it up. And I, I do think the council will be unanimous in favor of the motion that will come before them on April 8. And a lot's going to happen in April, but we have to get momentum going here to, to go with the things that are coming due and the things that are, that are expected of us.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, Sarah?
Could I ask, what, what is the motion on April 8?
Well, the, the motion will ask the...
Oh, for the affordable housing overlay?
The affordable housing overlay. And you, you've, you've seen the...
So, so the deputy mayor has asked to be placed on the council's agenda, the council to direct the planning commission to consider that.
Yeah. And it will involve directing the planning director to work with the, the planning commission to plan for this overlay that eliminates, well, it, it focuses upzoning. And it doesn't, it doesn't require the blanket of upzoning that has been, you know, been our, our working, working model. So I don't know if there...
I would, I mean, I'm tempted to respond and just, you know, just say, thank you for putting this in the ethical framework.
Yeah.
You know, I think what we're here doing is trying to express the values, to divine our community's collective ethos.
Yeah.
And, because we know that we're, the choices that we're making have consequences for everyone throughout our community, and, and all those great programs that you spoke in support of, impact the people's livelihoods, whether they'll stay in their homes, whether they'll stay on Bainbridge at all, and what the view will look like, what the air will smell like, what the water will taste like, right? And so, yeah, I like the, the fact that that's an expression of our values, because you go to a foreign land or a city, and you can tell how they value their people and their resources. And, and I, I want to, and I think we are, channeling the community here together, and sometimes awkward, because we don't all agree all the time. But with rational minds, I think we're coming to balance. And, and I think we're landing pretty close to the community sketch that's been presented to us, and that we agree that this is a path forward to the future.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Chris, I'd like to add, I guess, a reminder, because this really speaks to my, my entire family. None of us would be here if we hadn't already been here when Bainbridge became the place. None of us would.
No.
And so I think sometimes you see real estate prices, and, you know, I think sometimes people forget, there are a lot of people here who, I have a family member who paid probably less than $200,000 for their house on an acre in the early 2000s.
Yep.
It, I mean, they put sweat equity into it, but they, I mean, there's a lot of people still here that are, are not of the income level, and...
That last generation.
It's like you brought up the levy, you know, Chris, you had pushed back on the levy a few meetings ago when it came up. I mean, that, I, people in their 70s should not be putting, I mean, they're already putting away $1,000 a month towards property taxes. I mean, the city, if the city is going to, you know, you're taxing people, the people of the income level, you're trying to create housing for, you're displacing those people that are already here.
Yes.
And so it's not, I think it's unfair to imply that it's, that, to question what's in front of us and what we've, you know, questioning our water resources, you know, sewer capacity, yes, there, upgrades to that plant can be made to create more capacity, but have you looked at the cost of that? And who's going to pay that?
Yeah.
And so I, I think that it's, I don't think it's fair to say, I'm not saying you said this.
No.
But I don't think it's fair to say that because we're questioning things, or that we're not in favor of, you know, huge density increases to make something happen, that we're somehow not meeting our moral or ethical obligation to creating affordable housing. I've always been an affordable housing advocate, but, I mean, we, isn't, isn't one of the requirements of the update of the housing element anti-displacement policies?
Yeah.
And so, and I, and I hear the council, whether you guys are talking about new taxes for road improvements or bike lanes, now housing, and I hear council members all the time say, well, there's, the county allows, you know, reduced income taxes for seniors, low-income seniors. Well, I know a low-income senior who also owns a house that she rents affordably to a young family.
Yeah.
That house is not going to get any special treatment. So what happens to that family in that house when those taxes go up?
Yeah.
And so I think that sometimes the council is not very cognizant of, you know, was it death by a thousand cuts? Because we also have the fire district and the school district, and all of these, and then just our regular, my health insurance has gone from like 300 a month to almost 600 in like three years. I mean, costs are increasing everywhere.
Yeah.
And so I think we have to consider the cost of utility upgrades.
Yeah.
And this idea that, I, I mean, I personally am, I think when I started this, I thought I was not necessarily against the housing levy, but I just don't know that that is, I hope the council's not counting on a levy as being the way to build the affordable housing, especially when you guys have tools at your disposal, like using some LTAC funds that you are not tapping into.
Well, I, I, I've been, this is one of the places where Kirsten Hytopolis and I are questioning, that's a very big ticket for that, and, and how, how essential is that expense? The city, the city got, we, we got ourselves in a, in a bind by neglecting spending money on essential infrastructure. And we, we didn't charge the right, we didn't charge, we didn't keep track of the costs of our water and sewer systems in Winslow. So people paid way below what, not only what they were capable of paying, but what they needed to pay to kind of balance and plan for the future.
But you shouldn't, that's kind of suggesting that the onus of plant upgrades and capacity increases are on current users and not the new users.
Well, it's, I'm not...
I mean, I don't, I don't...
I'm not very good, not very good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you expect...
I'm, I'm not, I'm not making very good sense here, I think, but this is, this is not my strong suit. But I do think balancing our, the, the things we choose to spend money on, and it's, it's been the hardest thing for me as a member of the council, making decisions, making what I think are the right decisions. I think, because we have so many different things that are, I think, urgent needs. Now, I, I don't want to go any further, I guess, with my inserting myself here in the, in the discussion.
Is Mayor Matthews with us online? Did she have, I'm told her hand was up. I can't see it.
Oh, thank you, Vice Chair Blossom. It was me. I was just trying to silently nudge John a little bit and just, just tell him just to be careful, that I didn't want to be, any statements come across as representing the whole council or anything like that. So that was it. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Ashley. Oh, thank you, Mayor. Peter?
If I may, just being very cognizant of time, it's 9:59. I know there is another agenda item to move on to, zoning boundaries and things, but I would propose that we postpone that to our next meeting, which I believe we have for next week, if I'm, or at least I was asked if I was available for next week. I'm not sure if that's been confirmed or not, but...
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Yeah, I would suggest as much... Next Wednesday? Yeah, I would suggest, as much as I know we need to move on to those subjects, I do not think 10 o'clock with just our bare minimum quorum is actually the best time to do so.
Chris?
I agree. If you're making a motion, I second it. Move to remove.
I don't think I actually have to make a motion, but yeah, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't mean to be rude.
No, you're not being rude. I just wanted to read something from this Commerce document because I think it says what I'm trying to say, but it says it better in a way that's probably more understandable. So it talks about that the GMA requires full planning jurisdictions to make adequate provisions, that's a term, adequate provisions, for existing and projected needs for all economic segments of the community, including incorporating consideration for low, very low, extremely low and moderate income households, documenting programs and actions to achieve housing availability, including, including gaps in local funding, barriers such as development regulations and other limitations, consideration of housing locations in relation to employment locations, and consideration of the role of ADUs in meeting housing needs. It goes on to say that while GMA-compliant comprehensive plans in implementing development regulations, which must provide for sufficient land capacity, must be adopted by the periodic update deadline, actions to, actions taken to quote unquote, "make adequate provisions for a jurisdiction's housing needs," um, that do not need, that do not involve changes to the implementing development regulations for meeting the capacity may be taken after the periodic update deadline. Um, so that, I mean, I, that just continues to suggest to me that um, there are things we need to do for our update to make sure we have the capacity, which may include some small upzones. Um, but then there's a lot of stuff that needs to, that can and should come afterwards. And just sorting out what fits into what box, I think is, we can keep working on our district boundaries, but I, I do think before we get into FAR, heights, all of that, I do think we need to understand better what our obligation is for, purely for the update part, not after that trying to make adequate provisions. Okay, so we're gonna, too many tabs up. We're going to table the last item, which was to continue our discussion on the Winslow SubArea Plan geographies. Um, is there anything for the good of the order? And I can't see if Ariel's hands up. Okay. Um, then we are adjourned.